Brunswick County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for July 21st, 2025 to order. I have asked Commissioner Cook to please lead us in an invocation and pledge. You would rise, gentlemen, please remove your caps.
May we pray. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to live in such a great place. Place that people come to vacation and they come to reside eventually. And we thank you that that's just such a great place to be. We ask you that we do the people's business this evening and that we make sound and wise decisions. We ask this in your precious and holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we we come to the adjustments or approval of the agenda. I have one adjustment. I guess there's correct number here. Under the administrative report, number four. I would like to move that from the administrative report and have it presented at the end of the closed session. There will be pertinent information that we will need to to make a a motion or anything on that.
Just to clarify, it will be presented in open session after the closed session conclude.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Number four goes at the end.
If there are no other changes, I'll make a motion to approve with that change.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Neil, you have a change?
No. Change under presentation number two of the administration.
Uh huh.
We're going to ask that the board consider that a future meeting, we'll bring that back.
Okay, so taking that off of today.
So the fire service funding is being tabled? Oh, no, that's under administrative. Would you say it was on?
Presentation two.
Okay, my bad.
Fire prevention ordinance and. Yeah. And I'll make a motion with those two changes to approve. There's no other.
Okay. I got Williams and Cook. Thank you. All those, well, any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. On that presentation number two, whenever it talks about traffic calming devices, I'm assuming we're talking about those hideous bumps, those traffic bump, speed bumps. Okay, all right, cool deal.
Don't hold back, Randy, tell us how you feel.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's.
I agree with you.
I I.
You know, you loved avenging diamonds.
As many fire representatives are this evening, it probably would have been good to have that presentation, but we'll, they'll be back, so, okay, I'm good there.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and no opposed.
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
Okay, um, under the consent, we had community. The board that is the Community Advisory Board Committee members.
What are we talking?
And do what?
What, do you know what number we're talking?
No, I don't remember what number, but anyway, I want to thank staff for moving this forward. It's been on hold for a long time and decent people on that board spend hours at our nursing facilities and it's important to get a report back how our nursing homes are doing. And they well deserve mileage for their going from one home to the other to do a a report. And I appreciate Town Creeds coming back with their close out, putting 2.5 million back in the reserve. And the other thing that I had was the no wait zone. The matrix on there shows Hanes Brigham. Does that need to be changed or will we have to leave that? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we come to public comments, but my sheet was just taken. So please bear with us for a second.
So did we, did we?
We sit, we sit in silence or somebody could sing. Now, they just took the public comment sheet back or something had to be changed on it.
We approved you. And then that first and second.
We did, yeah. Frank Martin, the discussion, we go unanimously.
My ordinance stuff, yeah.
Senior moment?
Singing most.
They do happen.
Yeah, more and more frequently.
Thank you. All right, now we move on to the pub.
Becca.
We move on to the public comment section of our agenda. Most of you know the rules. Each person has three minutes to come up to the podium. Please give your name and address when you do. And at the end of three minutes, behind me, the screen will turn red. That means your time is up. Please respect everybody's time and move on. All comments shall be civil, no personal attacks, no obscenities or derogatory or slanderous remarks. So let's be ladies and gentlemen when we come up and state our case. Also, speakers should not expect the commissioners to have a back and forth, a dialogue with you. That's not what this is about. This is your time to tell us what you're thinking. And with that, we have a handful of names here tonight. How is it I have an address and no name? Who lives at 100 Barnum Town Road in Supply? You didn't put your name down?
No. I was told that if you put the name down, it would get through, it's part of the group, you know, so.
Oh, okay, so you are speaking for a whole group?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I still need your name.
I'm sorry.
I still need your name.
Oh, it's Darren Edens. And that's D A R R O N E D E N S.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
So thanks for this time. I wanted to, wanted to here today to talk about two issues and it's, and really to encourage Brunswick County to get involved with both of these. The first issue is the North Carolina Coastal Counties Fishery Coalition. Y'all have received a letter. Y'all, y'all received this, this letter here from Bob Woodard from Dare County. He's the commissioner in Dare County asking, what they're doing is they're asking for all the coastal counties to send a representative to be a part of that coalition. And what, what the purpose of that coalition is to protect the commercial fishing industry in North Carolina. And the goal that they've set for that coalition is to bring together county leaders from coastal regions to address critical issues with a unified voice, whether it's to the State House of Representatives, whether it's to the State Senate, whether it's to other private groups like commercial fishing industry, CCA, all of these things. So it's a voice. And so the, they feel like that this coalition will be, will be better served to advocate for the long-term health and the sustainability of the commercial fishing industry in North Carolina. So that's, so I would encourage you guys to pick a representative to be a part of that coalition. Their first meeting, I I do know that y'all have this on the agenda for your August 4th meeting, but the coalition's first meeting is August 5th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon in Carteret County. So I wanted to bring this to your attention ahead of time so that maybe, maybe there's some urgency when y'all meet and discuss that on the 4th, okay? The second issue that I have is, I don't know if you're aware, I'm assuming that you are. The study that was done on, on that Duke University did on pollution of the waters in in North Carolina. So that study was, came out in January of '09, 2009. And so what it does is it talks about the contaminants in that water, in the water that they saw through testing oysters, shellfish, different things. So the reason I'm bringing that up now is a couple months or a month ago, I was up at, in the state Capitol and we were advocating for a change to House Bill 442. That bill was, would have taken the ability to, to, for North Carolina Shrimperman to drag a net anywhere in North Carolina waters. And that's three miles, up to three miles off. So there was a lot of support from a lot of commercial fishermen up in Raleigh. And we heard from the opposition about that, that, you know, commercial fishermen are destroying the habitat. They're just killing the habitat, they're destroying it. They, they've done so for years, they've been allowed to do this on and on and on. What we didn't hear much of was, was the pollution that's in the rivers that they're finding and they're starting to see, and it's starting to really have an effect. So with that, I, I would like for you guys to also, encourage you to also get involved and learn more about the pollution that's happening around here in Brunswick County and what we can do. And, and that goes along with, with development plans and everything else of, of our estuaries and, you know, our marshes and things like that. So just bringing it to your attention so that you guys can be aware and, and encourage you to look, look into those things. And that's all I have for y'all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't know if I'm reading this right because of the way it's all been put on here. Kristy Merrick, are you speaking for a group? Are you speaking for a group?
Yes, sir. Brunswick County Conservation Partnership.
Okay.
Kristy Merrick, 2986 Longwood Road in Ash. Good afternoon, my name is Kristy Merrick, founder of Stop Overdevelopment Brunswick County and nonprofit Brunswick County Conservation Partnership with over 4,000 members and growing. I've came to these meetings for a long time now, expressing community residents and my concerns. I have been ignored by most of you. Some of what I expressed has already happened within our county, such as the flooding, the road loss, traffic increase, wrecks and deaths, tax increases, insurance increases, et cetera. You might not raise our tax percentage rate, but when our home and land values rise, our tax follows. I'm currently seeing a rise in auto insurances too. Our traffic accidents have already doubled within six months this year than previous years. We've lost five residents on Highway 211 within three months that I know of. Highway 211 and parts of 17 have been at capacity until 2045, according to DOT, but yet the residential building on these roads are still increasing. These are also major evacuation routes for our storms and our nuclear power plant. I have begged and pleaded for you to say yes to a moratorium for residential developing. Gaston County established a two and a half year moratorium on residential development in its South Point area due to, due to sewer capacity concerns. Brunswick County even faced a temporary development pause in June of 2019 due to, due to a sewer line moratorium. However, you all voted against implementing a broader developmental moratorium last fall in a meeting that a vote was not even on the agenda for. The meeting was supposed to be, was supposed to only give information about it and discuss it and set a date to vote. One of you were worried about the legality of it. And then one of you wanted to make sure the beavers didn't cause the flooding. During, during a meeting two months prior, Pat Sykes even spoke up saying, we aren't voting right now, while three of you were saying no to walk and walked away and ignored her. As our county imposes a health and safety risk still, I plead again with you to say yes to a temporary moratorium. New development has outpaced our water and sewer capacity. There are rumors that the county has asked H2O to help with this. We have bids coming in from Charlotte, Southport and County for water sewage updates. Not to mention the also famous osmosis plant that we, that we help, that we hope will help lower the PIFAs that we are consuming because it's contaminating our water, which is, which is contaminating us, the county residents, your voters, our animals, our farms and our children. The also, the osmosis plant, we have been given numerous dates that it has not been held by and now there is no date available that it'll be open and bids again are being executed. That is a huge concern and biggest reason to develop a temporary moratorium for residential developing. Approvals or permits approvals to be stopped for the health and safety risk of our residents. Think of this as another timeout for water and sewer extensions than a full-scale moratorium as in 2019. This will give the osmosis plant to finally open and water source catch up to the growth and be updated to handle the growth. You can't catch, you can't catch water sewage up and repair them and repair when every other month thousands more homes are being added. Give us time to strengthen our infrastructure. It can also give us time for the UDO to be finally updated. On a personal note, right now I go back and forth with my children to Duke for heart issues and Potter syndrome. Two of my youngest children that were born and raised here were, have both heart conditions. They aren't the same diagnosis and are currently doing more genetic testing. We have found that they are not linked to family genes or history. My youngest was also diagnosed with environmental asthma last year from the burning of unseasoned woods and brush by his school in our home. I will say that that has slowed down, but it's still happening. We have our kids in our county showing signs in these areas along with seizures, mutated genes, disabilities, et cetera. We, that could all be linked from our PIFAs. We need an epidemiology study in our area, which my nonprofit is trying to push from UNC and Duke. We need a flood study done in our area, which you all agreed over a year ago, but haven't done yet. We need a study to see the effects of all this rapid growth of, of, on our environment. Our area has a unique ecosystem, especially with our barrier islands, and we need our wetlands, which protect us against even more flooding and helps filter contamination. We need to start protecting now for our future and children's future. We need to see action. You have lost thousands of residents faith in you. We would love to see you put us first finally. Please don't take this as an attack on you, but me trying to open your eyes and see what we see. See what we are living through and our children are living through. Please take the time to put yourself in our shoes to walk with us. Thank you.
Mike Bianchi. Mr. Bianchi, are you also speaking for a group or for yourself?
My name is Mike Bianchi. I'm the general manager of Safe Harbor, South Harbor Village Marina. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about the no wait zone. Okay, so Safe Harbor, South Harbor Village, in 2024, we pumped over 197,000 gallons of fuel. A clear indicator of the volume of marine trap we have at the marina yearly. We had over 1,000 transient nights booked at the marina. So 1,000 separate visitors to Brunswick County. Unlike most marinas in the area, we are direct, located directly on the intercoastal waterway, which exposes us to significant hazards from large waves. These waves are not just inconvenient, they are dangerous. We've had sta, staff, members knocked off their feet, transient visitors knocked down on their boats. We have a floating dock office. Uh, we have a floating dock office that was rocked so violently that it uh hit a electric panel below and uh ripped, tore the roof off of it, literally. Uh, um, uh, we're not talking about hypothetical situations, we're talking about things that are happening now. Um, we understand uh American Marine uh construction situation. They're pretty close neighbors to us. We've uh done business with them, both as uh they've been uh members at the marina as well as done some contract work for us. And I understand uh the proposal for a no, uh, no wake zone near the uh Barbie Bridge. But respectfully, we believe that does not go far enough. Limiting the, the zone to just fifty yards east and fifty yards west. It, it'll help American Marine Construction. It won't help us or others that'll be exposed to probably more violent waves as they exit uh heading east that uh fifty yard uh past the bridge barrier. Um, I'm telling you, they're gonna gun it and they're gonna cause uh us even more problems. Um, so uh we urge the board to consider extending the no-wake zone even further in the application. Uh, uh, probably even east, uh, uh, point east of Dutchman Creek um to br- to better protect all stakeholders, including the thousands of uh local residents and visitors that use North Carolina Wildlife, Wildlife Boat Ramp at uh Dutchman Creek Park. Uh, like American Marine Construction, we have mechanics working in engine rooms, uh transient visitors doing mast repairs, climbed up high on their mast and uh, uh, all of whom are at risk when wakes slam into our docks. The North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission allows no-wake zones to be established to mitigate hazards to boating, safety which include fuel docks, congested areas and areas with a history of accidents, all of which apply in our situation. While we understand that economic impact is not a factor for North Carolina wildlife in establishing these zones, we, we believe it should be a consideration for Brunswick County. Um, our, uh, thousands of transient visitors uh going to local restaurants, uh hotels, um, et cetera, shopping. Um, the safety of our staff, our visitors and our infrastructure is at stake. And so is the reputation of our county as a safe and welcoming destination for boaters. We respectfully ask that you consider an application uh to um North Carolina Wildlife for a, a no-wake zone extended uh the east of fif- the fifty uh, fifty yards east of uh Barbie Bridge to a point, uh, I mean, excuse me, west, at, to a point east of Dutchman Creek. Um, and I believe that we have the full support of Senior Chief Atkinson at Coast Guard Station Oak Island. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. I, I have to ask a question. How many people are here with Mr. Bianchi? Okay, how many were here with Ms. Merrick? Okay, and Mr. Evans, how many people are here with you? Okay, thank you. Next up, Judy Andricak, Andrew Sack.
Judy Andresak, Ocean Isle Beach, and I'm here to address all of you, slightly different from the last time. This time I'm gonna read. The county commissioners and planning board are pushing Brunswick towards financial disaster, overbuilding that is straining our roads, water, sewer, hospitals, schools, electric, even our dump and other infrastructure to limits that simply can't be maintained. You're spearheading the destruction of the beauty and uniqueness of Brunswick. You're disrupting our way of life and losing forever the place of residents call home. Our forest and farmlands have been raped by greedy developers who throw up tacky tract houses using cheap labor and even cheaper materials while they fill in wetlands that will cause flooding. These developers don't contribute one cent towards improving our infrastructure, not one penny. And after they leave to suck another county dry, we're left with congested, ill-maintained roads, overcrowded schools, strained emergency services and citizens who are putting the bills for what they are taking. When these out-of-state developers build, they profit. We're the ones left behind paying the taxes and we're giving up our peace of mind and our way of life. The Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board may think they're in control, but they aren't. Brunswick, the entire state of North Carolina, and in fact, the entire county. You're all puppets of the developers right now. They're controlling you, you aren't in control. We all know their methods to get their way. We're now asking for responsible leadership, smart planning and protection for our residents because we're the ones who elected you. Quality's not currently manifested by any of the members of the bo- either board. Now's the time for you to take a stand, make a mark and call for a moratorium on approving and building any new developments. And then take it upon yourselves to set a course of action and improve our infrastructure, our county and our lives. Thank you.
Charles Drew.
I am speaking for a group, but I'll be done in less than three minutes.
Thank you, chief.
My name's Charles Drew and I reside at one twelve Park Avenue, Southport, North Carolina. I'm the fire chief at Southport Fire Department. It was elected last month by my peers as the president of the Brunswick County Fire Chiefs Association. The Brunswick County Fire Chiefs Association has a completely new board of directors, president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak publicly about an issue that I'm very passionate about. I've been involved in the fire service in Brunswick County since December the first nineteen ninety-one, joining a volunteer fire department the day after my eighteenth birthday, following in my grandfather and my father's steps. I'm the third generation of four generations of firefighters in my family. The fire service has changed drastically in Brunswick County since my joining thirty-four years ago. There is an array of calls for service that fire departments in this county are handling, relieving the burden from many other agencies. Lifting assistance and medical calls are two of the largest burdens of calls that the fire service is experiencing. Along with flooding of houses, flooding of streets and vehicles, trees and limbs down, roadway obstruction such as glass or debris. Basically, if someone calls nine-one-one and there's not a specific agency to handle the call, the fire department in that district is alerted. The fire department is not only a first responder agency in Brunswick County, but we have become a service agency, filling the gap for public assistance calls. Fire department funding is a hot topic at the present and is on your agenda once again. There are several fire chiefs throughout the county that are present this evening for that topic. Our association is currently having meetings to discuss funding options. The mayor's association has opened dialogue with our association and wants to partner with us uh on options for funding. I am formally requesting this evening that the Brunswick County Fire Chiefs Association be included in your deliberations, discussions and options with funding of fire service in the county. A collaborative effort of nonprofit departments, municipal departments with the mayors, the county commissioners and the citizens of this county will be needed to bring about a successful change to the funding mechanism for Brunswick County. Thank you again for this opportunity. We look forward to hearing from each of you this evening and in the near future.
Thank you, chief. I'm sure if this is Jennifer Gates or Gales.
Jennifer Gates, G A P E S, three five five four, White Spruce Glen, Southport, North Carolina. But also a property owner in Winnebago, so mine kind of follows up to the chief. Um, I'm here today as a concerned citizen. I grew up in this county, my family's been rooted deep in the, in generations here in this county, especially in the Winnebago Fire Department. This is no longer just about policy, it's personal. At the June sixteenth meeting, our commissioners had the chance to do something meaningful to support our local volunteer fire departments. These are the people who respond when we are the most in need at, at, when every second counts. At that meeting, six point eight million dollar subsidy was denied that would have provided desperately needed personnel funding to twelve departments across the county. At the same time, your planning board continues to approve new developments, adding more homes, more increased population and pressure without increasing the sport, support to the very people responsible for responding when things go wrong. Let me be clear, when this board has embraced the narrative declining, just embrace the narrative in one of your speeches that declined volunteerism across departments. I can't speak personally for all the other fire departments, but Winnebago Fire Department, they continue to thr- thrive even under immense pressure caused by the growth around them. Not, not the exception, by no means is Winnebago not the exception. They are the proof that with the right support, volunteer fire departments can meet this challenge. So why aren't they getting support? Let's talk about it. Three commissioners voted to table the, or deny the, the crucial funding. These are the same commissioners who routinely but vote against sustained growth, substantial growth, allowing our already strained infrastructure to inch closer to collapse. We can't finish the water plant, we're being asked to conserve water. And even now the electric company is imposing usage restrictions to keep us, to keep up. Let's be honest, this isn't about anti-growth or anti-development. It's about responsible, sustainable development. Because we cannot keep this pace without facing real dangerous consequences. Our chairman noted he opposed the fire subsidy because, because the county might change its fire service funding model next year. Meanwhile, he openly acknowledged that one-half cent property increase was necessary to meet the current needs, but still the support fell flat on its face. While the commissioners debate the fire tax models and legislative complexities, our volunteer fire departments are carrying the full weight of the county's explosive growth. And once again, they're asked to do more with less. These departments, are these departments even consulted on the growth in their communities? Are they at the table when massive developments are approved? Do they have the staff, the equipment, the trucks or the water infrastructure to support these new subdivisions? Or are they expected to figure it out based on the decisions made by an appointed board, not by the departments or the residents that have direct services and pay for those? At some point, we have to ask, is this part of a larger plan? Are we solely being pushed towards a county-run fire department by underfunding and overburdening the very volunteer stations that have long served these communities? Is that the direction? Then be honest about it, don't stand in the way of support today and, and wait while something might happen tomorrow. Because there, here's the question that needs answering. If you can't meet today's needs at our current tax rates, your words, not mine, why are you continuing to improve developments continuously? Why are taxpayers and today's overworked, overburdened firefighters and first responders being asked to short, shoulder the burden of the cost for future residents with no support? Commissioner Williams admitted a bit changes, changes needed, but still voted no. Commissioner Cook motion, made the motion to table the discussion entirely. And Forte instead acted simply said, he wants to wait and see what next year brings. Meanwhile, Commissioner Thompson spoke up and said, many of us already know we're not, we're not approving them, the, we're not providing the appropriate staff. And he's right, the delay response times due to understaffing aren't just budget numbers on a spreadsheet, they're lives and deaths consequences. But our first responders don't have the luxury to wait and see. They don't have the option to table emergencies. They have the act of duty, they have the duty to act and this board should too. So I ask you, what are you gonna tell the next person whose house is on fire? Or trapped in a car crash, or the next family member expects, expect, experienced in a medical emergency? Will you tell them their call was delayed because you're waiting to see how funding might change in twenty twenty-six? Let's stop, stop pretending this is not about bu- budget math, it's about priorities. From what I've seen, it's clear the board's priorities lie unchecked. Not with the people who live here, not the first responders who serve them. This board won't act to support the fire departments that are overwhelmed but has no problem approving more developments and straining us further. Winnebago has so many, and so many other departments have stepped up. They've risen to the demand, they've showed staffed, they've showed up, staffed up, stepped up when the county didn't. It's time this board did the same. The need is real, the solution was on the table and you still voted no. I'm asking you today, when will you, when will our elected officials prioritize us and our first responders? When will public safety come first before it's too late? Because the message right now is loud and clear, growth is welcome, developers are supported, but the ones holding the line, specifically our firefighters and first responders, are expected to manage this mess alone. We can't keep doing this, we need a commitment to real, sustainable support, not just studies, not just committees, not just talk. We can't build a county on empty promises and overburden volunteer fire departments. We need a board that leads and not one that wants to wait and see. Thank you.
Madam clerk. Madam clerk, can we reset the timer back to three minutes?
I'm deputy clerk.
Oh, I'm deputy clerk, sorry. That was supposed to be the, three minutes, it was over five and a half. It's back to three. This whole section of the agenda is only supposed to be thirty minutes and we have already exceeded that. But I'm gonna go on for a little while longer. I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments as brief as you can. Next up, Jason Gaver.
Good evening, Jason Gaver, seventy-one thirty-five Rockfish Lane in Leland. Mister Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Staff, good evening. I'm here tonight uh on behalf of the Board of Directors of Brunswick County Habitat for Humanity, along with myself uh as a representative of the staff. And I have a letter that Ms. Spivey, I'm sure I'm going to read it to each of you, but I'd like to read it into the record. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Brunswick County Habitat for Humanity, we are writing to respectfully request your support in helping us secure affordable and buildable residential lots within the county for the purpose of constructing homes for qualified Habitat Partner families. As you are aware, Brunswick County has experienced rapid growth over the last decade, driving up the cost and scarcity of residential land. These market changes, while beneficial in many ways, have made it increasingly difficult for organizations like ours to fulfill the mission of building safe, decent and affordable homes for families in need. Brunswick County Habitat for Humanity has a proven track record of creating long-term homeownership opportunities for hardworking families who are vital contributors to our community. Our partner families are employed, pay taxes and actively participate in building their homes alongside volunteers and neighbors. However, our ability to continue this work is currently constrained by the lack of accessible, affordable land. We are asking for your support in identifying and making available surplus county-owned properties, underutilized parcels or other affordable residential lots that could be used for Habitat Home Construction. Additionally, we welcome the opportunity to collaborate on any programs, partnerships or incentives the county may be considering that align with the increasing affordable housing opportunities for Brunswick County residents. Your leadership and support are essential in addressing the growing housing challenges that impact so many of our residents, especially those whose income falls below the median but are striving to build better futures for their families. We welcome the opportunity to meet with you to discuss the request further and to explore how we can work together to increase access to affordable homeownership in Brunswick County. Thank you for your considered, continued support, continued service and for your consideration of this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not even gonna try the last name. I'm gonna go with Kelsey from South Harbor. Is it Oluwet? Last name is Oluwet?
Olvet.
Yeah, I wouldn't have got that.
It's a fun one. All right, good evening council members. My name is Kelsey Olvet, I'm the dock master at Safe Harbor, South Harbor Village Marina. I'm here today to ensure that hazards caused by waking vessels near our marina are not overlooked before any additional no-wake zones are designated along the intercoastal waterway. I fear that if a new zone is placed I fear that if a new zone is placed just yards away from our location, without including us, we may lose the chance to secure the protection our marina urgently needs. In two thousand twenty-four, our marina booked seven hundred fifty-nine transient vessels through our online booking software. This does not include anyone that booked outside of it, paid with cash, any other, it's a very small part of what we take in. These travelers are a vital part of our Southport and Oak Island economy. Before these visitors hit the dock, they're asking us about taxi services, into-town provisioning, cosmetic or mechanical repairs via marine contractors, but without a safe place to dock, we fear this momentum may stall. Reviews are already showing signs of concerns. A guest wrote, so many people in Southport didn't observe the no-wake zone. For this reason, I would probably skip this marina and opt for somewhere else. Another said, we left a day early because we were on the ICW, rock and rolled all night and no sleep. I would hate to know the number of visitors we've lost to Wrightsville and Carolina Beach due to the unwarming conditions of our waterways. We are a small but vital part of your area's economy, and I want to ensure that every person who visits, whether for work or leisure, can do so safely. While the economic disruption is significant, it's one part of the larger issue. The constant wakes create serious safety risks for both professionals and visitors, whether it's divers working beneath vessels, detailers suspended with equipment, or families simply trying to enjoy a peaceful afternoon. I could go on and on about the daily hazards we witnessed firsthand, and it's clear that without protective measures, this environment will only become more dangerous. I've collected hours of video footage capturing wake disturbances along with guest reviews and testimonials from businesses and individuals who have been directly impacted by this ongoing issue. While I understand tonight's meeting is focused on the zone near the bridge, I couldn't let this opportunity pass without noticing the urgent need for protection just seconds away from the area you're considering. I respectfully ask that you consider the broader impact, not just for the bridge zone, but for the safety and sustainability and economic vitality of our marina and the community it supports. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Morgan, I have you on two separate lists here. Which one are we doing? Okay, I'll call you up later. Doreen Stecker? Doreen? Did Doreen leave? Doreen from Brunswick Forest? Okay, moving on. Michael Darby?
Michael Darby, Brunswick County resident.
I need your address for the record.
Eighteen oh eight Stanley Road, Sappis, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I'm a taxpayer, military veteran, worked in air defense. Had a top secret clearance when I was in the military. I was not a D E I R, was not. Guarantee you that, you can't be that. I was not. Also a writer, wrote on the Beacon for about eight years, some of you may know me. I'm just a concerned citizen. I have water and sewer, but I'm here to represent those who do not have water and sewer. And my question is, you know, I've served on many boards, and I know how boards work. And I know that if it's the priority of a board, they will address that problem. And my question is, is there enough money? And is there much money in the budget to at least address some of the water and sewer problems that we have in this county? I moved in this county around thirty years ago, and I heard the same cry coming from different people, and there does not seem to be any changes. I drive up and down Highway seventeen, and I see all kind of developments, which seems indicative, we got some money coming in. Got a record number of golf courses, where is the money? And could some of that money go toward water and sewer to those people who need help in this county? That is my question, and I think it would be the Christian thing to do. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I was on the board. And if some of that money would not go to help some of the most desperate people, disenfranchised people in this county who do not have a voice. That is my concern. Thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. That concludes the public comments portion of our agenda. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thompson Cook.
Thompson Williams. What did I say?
You made me fifteen years.
I'm down here.
Senior moment, huh? Buddy, every ten minutes.
You gotta speak for yourself on that.
Any discussion?
On the senior moment, or on the?
Either. If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Presentations. I missed something, why do I feel like I missed something?
That's just long consent.
Yeah, it is, that was a long consent. Uh, presentation, Mister Brooks, come on, join us.
I'll join y'all from up here if you don't mind, since we have a presentation for you this evening, so.
Chairman, I need to ask this, is it, or isn't it true that you commuted from vacation some four hours away just to come up here and do this presentation? And then you're gonna turn around and drive back to be with your family for another three and a half hours or better?
That is true, I love Brunswick County and I love giving presentations.
Well, we thank you for being here, sir. Thank you.
And can't tell you how much we appreciate you.
Right, so thank.
No, you're a knucklehead, I'd have stayed on vacation.
Well, thank you, thank you tonight for having me to speak on this issue. Just give you a little bit of background about why this is on the agenda for tonight and what we're looking for. Back in September of two thousand twenty-four, there was PTC eight, obviously, that brought a good amount of damage within our community. Then in November of two thousand twenty-four, in response to some questions from the commissioners, there was a potential presentation given regarding potential amendments to the stormwater ordinance. That was just kind of an overview by our engineering department, Ms. Bridget Flora, and Mister Richard Christensen gave that presentation. At that meeting, I don't believe there was any board action that was taken specifically with any direction as to any specific things to bring back. So recently, with some of the flooding events in Texas and North Carolina in July, a couple commissioners reached out to staff administration and expressed their interest in revisiting this issue. So with that, tonight, what we would like as far as staff is to understand the board's interest in potentially amending ordinances and/or pursuing alternatives to stormwater and flood management. You just kind of want to take your pulse tonight and see kind of where we're at with things, and then kind of what your interests may be. But I think it's also very important that you understand and have a full picture of what the current regulatory landscape is, which is what we're governed by, and there are certain things that we may want to do that we just can't do at this point in time. But there may be other things that we can pursue to look at, so we're gonna give some options tonight. So a couple of those options potentially could be draft amendments to the flood damage prevention ordinance. We could take a look at that and bring something back for future consideration by the board. Same for the stormwater ordinance, we could draft some amendments to those ordinance as well. And then another thing that has come up is the potential to investigate the potential of a stormwater utility. That is a significant undertaking, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go on. Wanted to kind of check your both pulse on that tonight. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna talk a little bit about our county flood damage prevention ordinance. You'll hear from me for a minute, and then I'm asking Ms. Bridget Flora to come up tonight and to say a few words about the stormwater ordinance, and then she could get back to me and we'll kind of sum up from there. So hopefully this won't take too terribly long for you. But the Brunswick County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance was originally approved in nineteen eighty-six, so it's been around for a while. What it, having that flood damage prevention ordinance allows our citizens to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. This gives folks in Brunswick County the ability to purchase federally subsidized flood insurance that provides substantial savings and yield premiums. This also allows homeowners and businesses owners eligible for low-interest federal grants and loans from agencies such as HUD and the SBA after a federal disaster. So this is a really critically important thing for the citizens of our community. You see a link there, I put that in here tonight because I want to bring to your attention and everyone here's attention that there is a significant amount of information on our county website under floodplain management. I'm not gonna attempt to go over, even scratch the surface tonight of what our ordinance means, and those kinds of things, but I would highly encourage people to go and check out that website, look at the resources that are there, look at the FAQs, and educate yourself a little bit more about what it all means, because we're really tied to a lot of federal regulations on this, and the links to those as well are located on the website. So just briefly, briefly, five thousand foot view of what some of the things that are regulated within the floodplain damage ordinance. One is what the floodplain is. The floodplain is the entire area, and it's based upon one hundred-year floodplain, five hundred-year floodplain and the like. So this is just kind of a good example that kind of shows what you're looking at. You talk about the floodway, that's the area that's more adjacent immediately to the stream and the like, and then the base flood elevation you can see is established with those FEMA firm maps as well. A couple of other things that you always talk about when you get into flood damage prevention ordinances is even words, base flood elevation, as we talked about, that's what's established on the firm maps. Freeboard, that is from your base flood elevation to the surface of your lowest finished floor. So that's what you see, Brunswick County has a two-foot freeboard, there's other communities, two-foot is pretty standard, but you do see some communities that have an increased freeboard. Regulatory floodplain elevation is that's called out within our floodplain ordinance as well, so that's a term that's very common. So another reason that we're talking about this tonight was our neighbors in Leland, who I do have some familiarity with, brought up a potential ordinance change at their meeting last week, their commissioners meeting. And they had several proposals within that ordinance that are pretty progressive, and some things that were, things that you don't normally see in floodplain prevention ordinances. What they were proposing was expanding the applicability of their flood damage prevention ordinance to the five hundred-year area. So if you remember on that first slide, I showed we regulate in a hundred-year floodplain, they were looking at doing the five hundred-year floodplain, some a little bit bigger. Looking at increasing that freeboard height from two foot to four foot. Again, that is something that some communities do. Their proposal limited fill, which means you can't bring additional dirt onto lots to raise your lot. That was, that's pretty unique. And then limiting the density to two dwelling units an acre in a hundred and five hundred year flood hazard areas, which is, to our research, pretty unprecedented. Last week on Thursday, their board voted three to two to table the discussion, there was no action taken to move this forward or to effectively deny this, so it was pushed to a future meeting. So just as an update where we're at with that, where they are with that. Can you, before you get off of that slide, can you remind us the definition of a one hundred-year floodplain and a five hundred-year? I know you touched on it a second ago, but just. Sure, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to remember the percentages in my brain. The one hundred-year floodplain is there is a one percent chance every year that you would be, that your structure could be flooded. And I believe that the five hundred-year is a point zero two chance that your, that your, that your property could be flooded in any given year. Again, I'm no expert on floodplains, so we can, if we're gonna win the future as we get into this, we can bring you some.
Neil, I could. Increasing the freeboard?
Yes, sir.
In this case, as they tried to do, from two feet to four feet, you've just doubled the amount of steps walking into a home. Okay? How does that affect, like, the handicap ramps? Because I know, because I had to put one on my mother's house some years back, and it's for every foot, the ramp has to be like twenty-one feet long. I mean, you'd have an eighty-five foot ramp.
Yeah, yeah, that was one of the concerns that was brought up at the Leland meeting, was the idea of handicap accessibility once you raise the flood. So yes, you would have to meet handicap accessibility in certain cases, or if you just wanted it to be handicap accessible, that's what it would need, you would need to do.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir. So anyway, as we look at what we can do with the flood damage prevention ordinance, one of the things that we've heard and we've reviewed is that at this time, as of today, as of July twenty twenty-five, the amendments to the Brunswick County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance would potentially be in violation of Senate Bill three eighty-two. And the reason why is because it would create non-conformities, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about non-conformities here in a minute. And also, it could result in, potentially result in downzone. Downzoning is effectively when you take and restrict the ability of people to use their property any more than what they are currently able to do right now. Senate Bill three eighty-two puts us in kind of a precarious position right now. There has not been anything litigated on three eighty-two yet, and the effects of that yet, but all the advisements that we've gotten from the North Carolina School of Government, from Michael Harvey with our in-focus planning consultant for UDO, and County Legal Department has urged us to kind of tread lightly. So as we consider this and look at what we're gonna do, we just need to keep that into consideration. What we are doing currently, with this in mind, the floodplain administrator is currently evaluating potential amendments to the flood ordinance, because frankly, we do think there are things that we can improve in the ordinance. And as we work with those, we just need to make sure that they are legal and in the context, that we can do it before we would propose it back to you. Working with this UDO consultant, we're gonna have a UDO update for you at your April fourth meeting. So August, or yes, August. Yeah, thank you.
You said April.
Yeah, April Fool's Day. But now at our August meeting, we will, August fourth meeting, we'll have an update on the UDO there, and I'll also ask staff to give a little bit of extra information as to where we're at with floodplain regulations. Speaking again about those non-conformities, ask staff to pull together kind of some map here, just to kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at when we talk about potential impacts of things. So this is the total number of structures within Brunswick County that are located within a flood zone. That's twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven structures. Structures means homes, sheds, anything like that. So that, we didn't have a layer that gave specific to single-family residences, so I want to be sure to note that. I will have some, a little bit deeper dive here on the next slide. But twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven structures that are located within flood zones countywide, so that means not just in Brunswick County unincorporated, that means within your Lelands, your Oak Islands, your beach community. So this is all countywide, and this is based on tax info. That's also a number from two thousand twenty, that's the last data that the tax office had specific to the structures for the use of this map. So we didn't have any data over there. So you can extrapolate from that, that that number is probably likely larger than it shows there as well. So when you look at structures, I asked them to look at structures that were over six hundred square feet, so that would kind of take out mostly like your smaller structures in your sheds. They were able to run that, and you get twenty, just under twenty-five thousand structures within the county. So when you think about when we change these laws and change these regulations, you're looking at affecting nearly twenty-five thousand plus structures. And when you're looking at making potential non-conformities, there is some potential there for concern as we look for that. So at this point in time, I'm gonna ask Ms. Bridget Flora to come up and kind of switch gears over here to stormwater ordinance and some of the things that we could potentially do with that.
Neil, before you move on real quick. Come on up. If, I'm all for this, I believe we need a stormwater ordinance, okay? Anything we do, though, would just be more. Anything we do though, would just be moving forward. We're not going to change anybody's home currently, correct?
No, no, you wouldn't change anybody's home currently. However, if I had a home that was in a flood zone and there was damage to my home, substantial damage to my home, I would be applicable to rebuild to the current flood standard if it's fifty percent or more damage that would, that would come to my home. So yes, you would, if, if someone lost their home, they would have to bring it up to the current standards. And also, that also applies for additions to homes. So if you're, the, the current flood zone rules would apply if I wanted to build an addition onto my home or any other type of, of structure as well. So just, so if you, if you had a, if you had a home in a flood zone and your house was, was in the, the floodplain and you wanted to bring in a shed and we passed the new rules, you're going to have to comply with that shed being appropriately in the new rules.
Got it.
Neil, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Think I know the answer, but my understanding is that our ordinances currently exceed what the state and federal mandates are.
I, I, I'm, I do not know the answer to that question right now.
I believe that's the case. Mr. Stone may be able to elucidate regarding that. Mr. Stone? Is that, is that true? I think I remember we were, we talked about this during the last storm and we were talking about how our stormwater aspects exceed what the state and the federal mandates are.
Well, we don't, we don't really have state and federal mandates. You, you voluntarily adopted a stormwater ordinance back in two thousand and three. Our standards are certainly above the minimum that you might see in a jurisdiction like ours. But there's, as you'll hear again later here, there's room, we believe, to make some changes that would be more protective for future development. And then we also have an option for you to consider that could provide perhaps some relief for existing communities.
What I was trying to say was basically, we have been looking into it over the years, but there's always room for improvement on anything we deal with, especially in light of what we saw with T P C eight.
Okay, Neil, if the legislature took Brunswick County out of the Senate Bill three eighty two about the downzoning, then we should be able to do our amendments without an issue.
If, if we were exempted from
The downzoning.
The downzoning, I think we would have a much greater menu of things that we could do.
Okay. I just want the public to know that the downzoning has to be resolved.
Absolutely.
But I do appreciate the amendments coming back to us to know what we need to vote on. And I'll work on the downzoning.
Any other questions for Neil before we turn it over, Ms. Flora? Ms. Flora?
So this is back to the presentation we did back in November. So the, the primary, the summary of existing goals and elements of the Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance are to minimize the public's risk of injury and death and limit damages to private and public property caused by stormwater runoff within the county's jurisdiction. We maintain and increase the rate riparian buffers along the streams and waterways within the jurisdiction, provide for the public's health, safety and welfare by protecting the water quality of the county's rivers, estuaries and other water bodies and wetlands, and ensure county compliance with all applicable federal and state regulations. So our current riparian buffers, we currently require thirty foot riparian buffers to be maintained on all sides of intermittent and drains, ponds, lakes and other water bodies in the county. And this just gives the definition again of a riparian buffer. It's area of trees and shrubs and other vegetation that is adjacent to the natural drainage way and is to be left undisturbed. They reduce the impact of upland sources of trapping, filtering and converting nutrients, sediments and other chemicals and maintain the integrity of the drainage way. And they're determined to be based on features that are found on the USGS Geological Survey or the USDA Resource Conservation Service. And right now they're currently are not required to be placed around wetlands. So some of the potential changes we brought before for the riparian buffer requirements were to increase, potentially increase that width from thirty to fifty feet. Developments currently permitted to the state already require fifty foot vegetative setback. This buffer could be split between two different zones. One, one zoned for an undisturbed thirty foot buffer or, and, and potentially add a second zone, twenty feet outside of that, that could be disturbed, but, but ultimately revegetated. We have a table in our stormwater ordinance of uses allowed in the riparian buffers. And currently stormwater ponds all are allowed to be in the buffer. And one of our suggestions would be to take that out, move stormwater ponds outside of the buffer and leave those areas intact. Also potentially add a minimum buffer, riparian buffer around wetlands too, to, you know, make sure we keep those wetlands protected. And to require stormwater ponds be built outside of the one hundred year flood zone. Okay, the previous, the, the other main thing on our ordinance is the pre versus post stormwater control requirements. We currently require the one year, ten year, twenty five year storm events to be controlled to predevelopment conditions. And as you can see, that's a twenty five year storm is approximately an eight inches in twenty four hours. Proposed changes to the ordinance would bump that up to the, to be, to require the hundred year twenty four hour storm, which then is approximately ten to eleven inch storm. A lot, in our TRC process right now, if we know that a development is near wetlands or near a flood prone area, we are asking engineers to design to that hundred year storm and, and many of them are already doing it just based on our encouraging it. So the other, the other possibility would be to, I mean, our hundred year storm would be obviously the sizing of our stormwater ponds to control the runoff leaving the site. Currently standard design for conveyance systems is ten year storm event. That's pretty standard across everywhere. We don't, that's not really something that's, that's part of our review. But, you know, there is always the opportunity to look at seeing if it would be beneficial to increase the design storm for the design conveyance systems or start looking at freeboard in those systems to make sure that houses are, you know, during what rate, any rain events, we can determine that, make sure they're not going to flood. Now stop doing anything. Oh, there you go. Back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Flora. So anyway, as far as ways we move forward, I think that Ms. Flora touched on a couple of things that we're already doing. You know, through our planning process, I've had some good conversations with our planning team. When they have these planned developments come forward, they are talking about these, these things that do go above and beyond. And when the developer is willing to do that, which is, has been a pretty good success rate so far and through the planned development process, we are seeing them put in the hundred year storms, being able to manage that. So we, we have a mechanism there that is voluntary, of course, but allows them to put in some of these, these requirements. Now the requirements are not mandated, right? So, so they're through this planned development process, which does have negotiations that goes on. And then it goes to the planning board for their approval through that planned development process. So, so there are things that are, that are going on within staff to, to encourage these as well. But I do think that we could probably do a better job as staff of putting it out there, what those things are that we're doing. So that'd be something that we would look to do to, to give you guys more information, to kind of let you guys know about the things that we're doing and the public as well. I think it's really important they understand the good things that we are doing to get out there in front of these stormwater and flooding issues. One of the things we could look to do as well would be to do some further study of this and incorporate legally appropriate amendments to the floodplain damage prevention ordinance as part of, part of the U D A modernization project. Again, August fourth meeting, looking for staff to bring, bring back some updates on where we're at in that project. Look to keep working in that venue and that avenue with, with our consultant there to put in what we can. The problem with this whole thing, and it is very frustrating for staff, is that with Senate Bill three eighty two is in existence. It is the law of the land. There is nothing that went forward that would have repealed that in the legislative session this time. So we, I think the initial thought after Senate Bill three eighty two was, oh, in the next session, they'll take care of it. Oh, in the next session, we may be in a world where it's not going to be fixed in the next session. So we've got to figure out then, what are we going to do? How are we going to address these things so that we can keep moving forward, knowing that those are the legal restraints that we have to operate in? Because what's frustrating right now is if we said, okay, let's pretend like it doesn't exist and we go ahead and we do, do all these amendments, well then it, it never goes away, then we've wasted a lot of time and a lot of money on that. And if we can go ahead and we say, okay, well, we think it's gonna, you know, it's, it's going to go away at some point. We just, we just don't know right now. So, so we are in this limbo area, but I think that as the, as the months go on and we work on this U D O a little bit more, then we're going to get to a point where we'll have some form of clarity to, to move things forward. Finally, or next, I think we further investigate proposed language amending the stormwater ordinance. I think what Ms. Flora has presented tonight are some reasonable things that staff thinks that we could amend in an ordinance and bring that back before you. Obviously, we would still need to look at the considerations for there for the legal. So if that's something they are interested, we could look at potentially doing that. And then finally, one of the big issues that we, that we run into is there's a lot of discussion about flooding in the community and how a lot of it is, is kind of pinned on the new development. And, and certainly anytime that you, you put in additional impervious surface, you know, it, it could potentially have impacts. But what we're seeing really is that a lot of these developments are built to much higher standards than any developments that we've ever seen in our history. And a lot of where we're seeing these problems occurring are in areas that were preexisting. Right? They're, they're not, because the way that the stormwater works, you have to catch the stormwater on your own property, right? You have to treat that stormwater. And so you, you, you start seeing that. So we really haven't had a tremendous amount of flooding in any of the newly built developments. But we certainly do see it in the preexisting developments, which I think some of those residents would contend part of their problems are exacerbated by other development. So I think we have to be understanding of where all these different positions are, but also understand that, that there's not really a magic bullet for this, for this thing. We can't necessarily regulate our way out of it. There are going to be issues in our community that we're going to have to address long term. These preexisting issues, they're not going to go away with telling the next developer that you can't do this. You know, you, you're gonna, we're have to look at a more, more robust approach. So one of those potential approaches is to create a county, countywide stormwater utility. So this is a, this is a significant undertaking where the, the folks in the county pay, pay a fee for this stormwater utility. And then we would be able to do these projects that mitigate larger, larger system wide flooding issues. But if we want to go ahead and, and pursue that, I think we probably need to study what that might look like. A feasibility study for potential county, countywide stormwater utility. Cause I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you here. It's going to be extremely expensive to fund a stormwater utility. That is just the fact of the matter. But also if the county's interested in trying to tackle flooding issues with that approach, it's something we could certainly look at. But we need to know, you know, what, what that cost looks like, what that system could be, what are the types of projects that we'd be doing? So I think that would take further investigation beyond a level that staff can just come up with on, on, on the back of a neck. So as for tonight, that's, that's all I have for the presentation, but I know that any direction that y'all can give, we'll take notes and, and let us know kind of what, what you're interested in.
Well, let's start and we'll go right across. I'm sure everybody has questions.
First of all, thank you for this. I mean, there's a lot in here to digest first and then, you know, going back to what you said about a lot of the more recent developments, you don't see the water going outside of those developments. With the old ones where there is, where there are problems, how many of those rely on DOT maintained drainage when the water goes out of their neighborhood and it gets into a ditch that's been clogged up for twenty years? That's not maintained by them or by us, it's by the DOT.
Certainly, yeah, that, that, that is certainly a major concern. I, obviously my background, I came from municipal where we had city streets and, and, and you did have more responsibility for the conveyance. In the county, most of these roads are county roads, the, the, not county roads, they're DOT roads, as you said. They have the stormwater systems and the conveyance systems alongside of them, and it does follow the DOT to maintain them. And also there's a lot of private drainage too, that goes through ditch systems and the like.
And we submitted a resolution months ago encouraging DOT to maintain their ditches in the Kama service area and allocate money to do that. Because if it's in the Coastal Area Management Act area, then it's ought to be maintained to the same level they would hold others to. So that's just something maybe we need to double down on that. I know they've got funding issues, but if we can get them funding to maintain their ditches, that will help these communities that were built thirty years ago that didn't have a stormwater system. So that's the, one of the main questions I have. I mean, on a stormwater utility, I've asked a few people who, with other governments about those and heard a wide variety of opinions on them. So I would certainly want to make sure, sure we know what we're getting into and that we've thought about all the unintended consequences. Cause I think that's a much bigger animal than probably any of us realize.
Did you want to go?
Yeah, I can, I can go, go now. I agree with you that Senate Bill three eighty two is one of our big focus points. That we need to focus on that. I commend Leland for stepping forward and bringing this issue to, to light the way they did to, to make the recommendations, even though their board turned it down. I think that was commendable for, for them putting it on the table for discussion. I, I think that, you know, I heard a long time ago from a, from, from a good, good, good commissioner that you, you come to me with proposals and ways to deal with what your, what your limitations are. And when a, when a good department head, when a good manager, when a good deputy manager comes forward and works together and comes up with a plan that understands the limitations, but provides you with a way to work with that. And I didn't mean to leave the legal department out of that at all. You know, that, that's important. And to be quite honest with you, if Senate Bill three eighty two stays in place, we better come up with something creative and we better come up with something, putting our heads together to figure out how to get around this. Because I don't think our county and our residents can stand what we have seen. And, I mean, I, you know, you can say that it'll never happen to you, but I, I, I have, I would not be surprised to see additional flooding in Brunswick County within the next five years, whether it be from a, from some type of storm. You know, and that's, that's not taking the development, it's taking the development and everything out of the picture. We need to be creative and we need to come up with something to address this. And I, our engineering staff, I commend you for, for coming up with, with the suggestions that you have thus far. But I think we need to come together as a larger group to figure out how, how we drill down into this legally and try to come up with the recommendations and the suggestions to bring back to this board. And I love your idea of, a timely idea of making that happen in August, that would be just one. That's all, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I heard what you said about the older hundreds that was built before the new ones came in. But however, the newly homes are built higher up, which causes the ones that was already there to flood. So that's really not fair to them. So there needs to be, when they build the newer homes, they need, they need to have some kind of drainage that doesn't go to the neighboring house, because I'm one of them. So I know, and I've seen other developments, because I ride by them continuously, that the older home is going to be. that the older home is going to be flooded when they finish that development. And this, the runoff from that new development needs to be going somewhere away from the other house. But, um, that's my concern is the person that was already here and then they're being damaged. Uh, there's one in Southport that is going to be devastated. He was devastated during, um, uh, Tropical Storm eight or whatever. Uh, it was awful. Over there by the cemetery.
Well, I think what's really enlightening to me was Tropical Storm or P, or what we call potential tropical, uh, whatever, TPC eight came in. That surprised everybody. We were on a conference call and I remember the meteorologists sta, stopping mid-sentence and saying, wait, this is not doing what it's supposed to be doing. And, uh, essentially we ended up getting water from fields and from woods. Not from development, not from anything else. That's what flooded the parking lot right out here from fields and woods. So that was no paradigm that was different that was going to drive that water here. It wasn't a development, it wasn't a highway, it wasn't anything, it was coming out of the fields and woods. So we have an interesting paradigm whereby we had that flooding. And that's why we're putting our new HHS building over there in the walkway, because we got to have an elevation that's higher. You've studied this, Bridget, I know you've been doing it forever. And so the thing is, you understand stormwater and you can get down to the point source. You're amazing, because I've, I've dealt with you through the years and you can go back two miles and find an abandoned lake. And that's where the runoff's coming from and things like that. So I know you know what you're talking about, but still it's complicated. And to the casual person like me, the layman, even if I study it, I don't understand it. So there's a lot of things that sound good, but really aren't good. It sounds good. Yeah, let's do something. Let's do something now. Let's make it happen. And then you do it and you put it in concrete. Now you got to change it, but it sounded great. Everybody thinks it's great, but the truth is it may not actually do anything, because I don't know that it would have made any difference during TPC eight. And then you run to the non-conformity aspect. That's another issue you've got. You've got Senate bill you've got to deal with. You know, we're going to have flooding and we're going to have to have stringent war, you know, flood aspects. Now, I lived in Florida for a very short period of time. Down in Fort Lauderdale, they said if we didn't have the flood control perspectives that we have, and they've got canals everywhere they've got a road, they got a canal. I don't advocate that at all, but the thing about, so they said they'd be underwater eleven months out of the year if they didn't have that. So, you know, that being said, uh, I think, and I, Mr. Forte maybe tell me, I think that we are understanding seventy-two percent of this county is not developed or is still very rural.
And I think that's the number.
Yeah, so that means that only about, you know, a quarter of this county of that is rural. And with time coming, maybe we need to look into the stormwater. We need to find a long-term answer to this. You know, my hat's off to the individuals who have stepped up and put in the hundred-year, uh, flood aspect with retention ponds and that sort of thing. And the, you know, the game's out whenever somebody has a hurricane or a tropical storm. It's like, how much rain are you going to get in twenty-four hours? It's just unbelievable. The other thing is, is this, this county is so big, one size does not fit all, because I compare notes with my colleagues up here and they have range gauges. Um, one from BSL, Chairman Forte over there, he may get two to three times my rain I get in Shloke. Because he's in Bulling Spring Lakes. So whatever we do is going to have to be able to fit this entire, uh, jurisdiction and be a workable solution. And then we understand it. And the, and the other thing is, they've made, now made it to where as every place, including the desert, is considered to be in a flood zone. Used to be areas work, now everything. So now we all have to get insurance, maybe lower if I live somewhere there isn't going to flood. But still, how in the world am I going to protect my property or somebody else is going to protect theirs? Or the unknowing individual that comes down here, moves and buys a property that is non-compliant and then they get flooded out. How do you, how do you deal with that? I don't know. So I guess we're going to have, this is a long-term type perspective to come up with a very good overall plans that we can move forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Sage?
Uh, Bridget, uh, I like your amendments, your changes. Uh, I wanted to let you know that I don't, um, agree with the stormwater utility. I think that would be way overkill and too expensive.
All right, Neil, I don't want to hold you up. I know you took ten, eleven hours out of your family vacation. Time to come here. Can't thank you enough. I would like to, and, and this is just me, I would like to have you come back to us next month. September even with something a little bit more concrete, where you think we might be able to go legally. I, 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 I would like to see something done about stormwater, obviously. The first ten years, I, I lived here twenty years. For the first ten years, there was nothing, nothing. Um, but the last ten years, holy cow. We get two and three a year. And I'm quite tired of it, same as everybody else. So I would like to see us come up with a plan of some sort, what we could do without destroying everything and without making the existing homeowners, putting them behind the eight ball where they got to spend money to, to change things. Yeah. Uh, otherwise lose their flood insurance or anything to that effect. We, we need something, I'll steal a word from Commissioner Cook, we need something comprehensive and dynamic. Okay, that we can.
I, I use the paradigm, I draw the circle.
And, and something that we could put our teeth into, that we can hold on to and say, I, yeah, that has potential. So, um, I, I'd like to see us pursue this a little more. If you can come back next month or the following month with something more concrete that we might be able to do something with. And pray that Level Heads in Raleigh drop three eighty-two and seven sixty-five. Cause otherwise there's nothing we could do about it.
So, so what I would, what I would ask then, um, would be, or what I present to you then would be that I think staff can work and get these, uh, potential stormwater amendments, um, in, in a codified type version, uh, back.
See what they look like.
Yeah, and we could, we could take a look at that. Uh, meanwhile, I would also, uh, presume or, or recommend that we go ahead and keep working on the UDO. Uh, and put the flood, uh, ordinance amendments and, and kind of massage that as the, the three eighty-two stuff's going on. Uh, but keep, keep on that track. Now, I guess the third element of that then would be the stormwater utility. Is there any interest in the board or consensus at the board for us to present what it costs might be for that? Or, or is that, that a no-go right now?
I, I'd like to know what it would cost, so at least we know what the pros and cons are either way. I'm not advocating we do either one, but I'd like to see us at least to have an understanding of what that would entail and what it would cost.
The, the cost of the study?
No, I don't know. I guess just to figure out what it would probably cost.
I think it's going to be hard for us to get a number of what the total cost of it is going to be without the study.
Could you research and see if any other counties or larger cities in North Carolina have one? We could just talk to them and find out what their experience is. Yeah.
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 Well, the problem is if we're not, we may be band-aiding something. I don't band-aid on it.
I'd be interested in counties that are not as densely populated as New Hanover, because we've got a lot of areas where there, you'll go a decent distance between homes and us in New Hanover is not apples to apples. So if there's another county. Yeah. If we can find one in a place that's similar to us, I'd like to talk to them. I don't, New Hanover, I don't think so.
You know, or Raleigh is Charlotte.
I did hear you say you were coming back in August.
He said he'd be here. UDO, we can, we can, we can, uh, give you the, uh, updates in, on that one.
And if we were to individually provide you feedback on some of the things in this presentation, when would you want that? So that you'd have it to review in time for whatever you're doing next?
Yeah, I would say any, anytime in the next two weeks.
Okay.
We're done with Neil, so you can return to his family?
Well, he's got another agenda.
Quite, I still got more.
Mr. Chairman, could, could I add one thing to this, please, sir? Uh, I, I, we certainly will follow the board's direction. Uh, but I really encourage you to consider authorizing a feasibility study for a stormwater utility, because changes to our stormwater ordinance primarily are only going to impact new development that has not already been approved. If we're going to effectively reduce flooding potential in existing communities, we're really going to need to have a stormwater utility to do that. And I'm certainly not asking that you say, yes, let's enact a stormwater utility. But I think the only way we can tell you what it would cost and how many staff it would take and what sort of fees it might generate is we would have to hire a qualified consultant to, to do a feasibility study.
I'm gonna say something.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, shouldn't we wait on that until we, uh, get something resolved with Senate Bill three eighty-two? If we can't make any changes to the UDO or to the stormwater, um, regulation, I mean, we can't do anything with a study either until after the fact. Cause we got to get this down zoning, uh, done away with if, or what good is anything?
We, we don't, we do not believe that Senate Bill three eighty-two would prevent, would prevent you from enacting a stormwater utility if, if you want to.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be able to change anything. We couldn't change the amendment, the, uh, regulation until after the fact.
Hmm, well, we, we believe you can change stormwater regulations. The questionable piece is whether you can change flood prevention ordinance. They're two separate ordinances and a stormwater utility would be a, a different ordinance that we, we haven't seen any legal advice that, uh, three eighty-two impacts stormwater.
I am, I'm okay with us at least researching the possibility. I'm not sold on it yet, but I'd like to know what, you know, what our options are. And, um, but I'd also again like to, if we can find some comparable counties that have one in terms of their size and also their density, if there's any place out there, I have no idea. It's not a popular topic at association conferences, but it may be in two weeks when we go.
Yeah. Neil, is there any way you can research what a feasibility study would cost us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just come back for that.
I think we could certainly get you the cost of feasibility study. I think we could give you the comparable data from other places that are more spread out uh, than an urban stormwater utility. We'll do a little bit more research on that, see what we can provide and we can provide you an updated future meeting.
And I, I would also want to know, you know, obviously ongoing maintenance is going to probably be paid, you know, utilities charge their people a fee. I'd want, you know, before we get into it, I'd want to know what that would look like.
And, and I think that's, and I think that's what the feasibility study would tell you.
Yeah.
Make sure we have the legal definition of stormwater and flood protection, which we can change and which one we can't. I want something permanent. I don't want to have to fight state and lawsuits.
I, I realize we live in an area where the, the, the water mark is all of about four inches above sea level. I, as everybody can hear, I come from a land where the storm sewers were everywhere. Um, so this was never a problem when I grew up. Yes, there was the ones in the blue moon flooding, but you know, a norista would come through, but it was never like we get here. Um, I, I know that we can't put in storm sewers because of, we, we have no elevation to do it. But I would love to see something that we could do to, to correct some of this. I, I don't know offhand if a utility is the way to go. It sounds like ridiculous amount of money.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, down in Florida, there are canals, like I say.
Yeah.
On every road that I lived or saw, there was a canal next to it and then they had locks, they had pumps, they had everything.
Yeah.
There's no elevation there either, but that's the way they control the flooding.
But if you could kindly come back to us with some more info or whatever you can generate.
Sure. It's two more, a couple of more things for, on, if we decide to do the feasibility study. One, it would be good for us to reach out to our federal lobbyists and our state legislators and see if there's any grant funding or state money available to help with something like this. And secondly, you know, we do have nineteen cities and towns in this county. It would be great to get a feel for, and there's no point in us doing this if it stops at nineteen different sets of boundaries. So it'd be great if we're going to do this to try to get everybody on board to participate and truly make it a countywide stormwater. If, if we do it, we don't need a patchwork quilt.
Sure.
Cause it's not going to be effective then.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, Neil.
I thank you for your direction.
I'll be calling you back up shortly, I suppose. All right, Elliot Swain, Taylor McDaniel from Cooperative Extension. Where they at? Okay.
They're very patiently waiting.
Yeah. It'll be a long one tonight.
Probably wishing they were earlier on the agenda.
Evening, gang.
Good evening.
Well, we hope to make this short and sweet and enjoyable.
Good evening, you guys. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Taylor McDaniel. I'm the Consumer Horticulture Agent and the VAD Program Coordinator for North Carolina Cooperative Extension in the Brunswick. Um, this is Elliot Swain, the Director of Brunswick County Soil and Water. And today we have an informational and educational video on the Brunswick County Voluntary Agriculture District and Enhanced Voluntary Agriculture District Program. A very quick background on what the Voluntary Agriculture District is, is the key North Carolina farmland preservation program that encourages owners to keep their land in farmer forest use. The purpose of the Voluntary Agriculture District is to promote the health, safety, rural agriculture values and general welfare of the county. It is to increase the identity and pride in agriculture community and its way of life, as well as encourage the economic and financial health of farming while increasing the production from undesirable and non-farm development and increasing the protection of farms from any nuisance suits and other negative impact, um, on properly managed farms. In Brunswick County, we have the Voluntary Agriculture District and the Enhanced Voluntary Agriculture District. The Voluntary Agriculture District is a voluntary conservation agreement stating that the land will be kept in agricultural production for as long as it's enrolled in the program. You must have a minimum of three acres to be eligible to be considered for the VAD program. And it must be considered a bona fide farm by the State of NC Standards. So there are a few benefits that are included in being enrolled in the Voluntary Agriculture District Program. And that would be the record of proximity, um, public notice, fifty-foot buffer zone from future developments and then protection from any nuisance lawsuits related to the production of agriculture. So the Enhanced Voluntary Agriculture District is basically the same as VAD. However, there are further stipulations enrolling in the program. One is that it is irrevocable once you voluntarily enroll in this program. And then the second one is that it is a ten-year conservation agreement rather than the, um, unlimited conservation agreement that VAD has. It also has the same ben, benefits as VAD, um, but with some added benefits of, um, the ability to sell a certain amount of non-farm products and then priority in governmental programs through the Department of Agriculture. Currently in Brunswick County, there are two hundred and seven landowners enrolled. And that is almost twenty-nine thousand acres, uh, of farmland that is enrolled in the Voluntary Agriculture District Program. And as of two thousand, twenty-twenty-five, five new landowners were enrolled. We created a promotional video with the purpose of educating stakeholders and residents of the agriculture industry in Brunswick County and how that might impact them. Things that might impact these landowners and stakeholders is the half-mile VAD zone that you might be affected for, by sight, smells and sound of agricultures if you live within a half mile of a VAD zone. And also this fifty foot, foot buffer zone for proposed developments. And then we would also like to increase the awareness of agriculture in Brunswick County while promoting the program to potential new members.
So, uh, since my time, uh, assisting with the Voluntary Agricultural District, um, one thing became pretty clear, um, to both me and my staff, is we were continually, uh, having to educate um, the general public, but also, uh, the potential applicants, uh, involved in agriculture. Uh, the most of the agricultural community that we would discuss these with, uh, initially didn't have, uh, a lot of information on what VAD was. And I'll admit, I remember when I was younger, uh, I think I was in college, seeing the VAD signs. And, uh, I was actually with the, uh, former director, uh, for Quad Extension and, uh, Mark Luns. And I was like, well, what is that over there? You know, of course, I guess it's voluntary, but aren't they already flowering it? Um, so yes, I, I was part of that. And when we presented this to the Advisory Board, uh, it was agreed that Uh, it was agreed that um we should pursue um something that we had um been shared uh from Johnston County. Johnston County provided, or they spent money, uh they had a professional crew come in and they developed a promotional video. Uh, for residents moving into that county, and so we decided we needed to do the same thing. In lieu of um trying to explore financial options and getting a professional crew to come in. Um, and to save time and money, I offered uh, I offered uh myself, my services to create this video. Um, initially, uh initially as more of a template for anyone that we might uh hire to do a professional video. Uh, but uh I've received uh good enough reviews that um I believe we.
I'll give you, I'll gi- I'll give you a thumbs up.
Um, and then before we all, before we view the video, I do want to thank uh especially Mark uh Pazis here. Um, he did an excellent job and he helped us out so much. Um, he really put in a lot of the effort and a lot of the informational portion of the video. And I believe that's it. So we'll go ahead and let you view the video.
Hope you enjoyed and.
Thank you. Well done, well done.
Hope you did. I hope we have your.
Uh, I'm by no means a professional videographer, um but I I hope that we get the message out to uh incoming residents. And then they can get some information on V A D.
Is this posted online anywhere that could be shared?
It is not yet, but we plan to post it on the um Cooperative Extensions, social medias, webpages, and in our monthly newsletter that goes out to an email list.
Is your voluntary ag district website, is that part of the county's website or part of the?
Cooperative.
Okay. It'd be, if you can send the link to the, to our clerk once it's posted so she could share it with us.
And we plan to put it on the sole on there, page two.
And and it'd be great maybe in the minutes if it could link to where this is posted as well, so if people want to watch it, those few people who read the minutes in their entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Brooks, come on back.
So I promise this item won't be as long as the other one. Uh, so what we have for you tonight is um a request that the Board of Commissioners can start approving the submission of an application. To the N C Wildlife Resources Commission that would create a no-wake zone in the intercoastal waterway adjacent to the Oak Island Bridge. Um, this is a public hearing tonight uh on this matter, so.
So we are, the we're, the public hearing is on us requesting the no-wake zone, is that correct?
Correct, for this specific property.
Need a motion?
Well, you can just open the public here.
I have.
And the gavel.
Now open the public hearing on the uh no-wake zone on the intercoastal waterway. I have one name on my list, Erica Morgan.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go ahead and present a few bit more information on it and then Ms. Morgan can present or would you like?
I have one, it's six or one and a half dozen of the other.
Yeah, cause that may answer questions that people.
All right, yeah, I do the presentation first and I'll ask Ms. Morgan.
Sure, so a brief presentation, but just uh hitting on a few highlights here. Uh, the process for applying for a no-wake zone, uh there has to be a request uh investigation done. Uh, in your packet tonight, you have a little flow chart, the N C Wildlife did, which I think is very helpful in understanding kind of how these things come about. Uh, there was a a request from American Marine Storage uh to to, for us to go ahead and and look at this. Um, this happened, uh I think it was about a year ago, prior to my time with uh the, with the county, but this was initiated. Uh, the N C Wildlife went out and did an investigation. I believe the original request was three hundred yards on either side of the Oak Island Bridge. Uh, after Wildlife made their investigation of this, they cut it back down to fifty yards on either side of the Oak Island Bridge. Um, so that's kind of what they would agree with, so we certainly didn't want to uh agree to something that they would not agree to. We all need to be in alignment with this. So as far as the process and how this goes now, is, it has to have a board action to authorize us to apply uh for this, to apply for what's called rulemaking. At the N C Wildlife uh Division Coastal Resources, and so it will go to them for a statewide approval uh to approve this. Effectively, this step is a, just a procedural step in getting a no-wake zone.
Neil?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a que- a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
We have two individuals who expressed interest in extending that aspect, but based on what I'm hearing from you. There has to be a request to North Carolina Wildlife first, and then there has to be a survey done by North Carolina Wildlife to even be considered for that extension.
That's correct. They have to have an, they have to come out there and investigate that, and obviously whatever this investigation was did not include uh that area to my knowledge.
So regardless, that's, that's a moot issue. We 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 can't.
You you do not have the ability to say we want to, you know, to extend it up to here and to put it up.
We don't have that authority. Only thing we have is a yea or nay basis.
Not, not tonight, you would.
Okay. But we could direct those individuals on where they could go if they wanted to request.
Yeah, and I I would be happy to speak with them as well. Uh, as this came up, what also came up, uh there was another, um several other jurisdictions. I talked with the Oak Island Fire Chief uh about some potential areas that they have as well. Um, so I think there's some potential for um for for coordinating with our existing communities that have this.
Any other questions for Neil? Okay. Ms. Morgan, come on up.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my name is Eric Morgan. I am the daughter of Tommy Perry, the owner of American Marine Construction. Is the name of the company that put forth this original request over a year ago. I'm also the project manager for the company. I spend a lot of time downtown on the docks. I grew up on these waters. I'm a third-generation commercial fisherman and a licensed captain carrying a U S Coast Guard a hundred-ton merchant mariner fridge. So, I'm here tonight to show support for the implementation of this no-wake zone under the Oak Island Barbie Bridge, locally known as the Old Bridge. However, the fifty yards does not extend into our property enough to cause us any benefit significantly. In fact, as you heard earlier, the entry point to a no-wake zone often sees the biggest wakes. As boats will slow down very quickly, and those wakes would throw directly onto our docks. So, we are going back originally to go through these steps again to include South Harbor as well, cause they were not included in the initial. Um, uh, survey done by the North Carolina Wildlife. Uh, but moving on for the yea or the nay, I would like to let you know that our property is directly in front and adjacent to this projected fifty-yard line east or west, east of the Barbie Bridge. Just to give you some perspective, the widest point of the waterway is over four hundred feet, and then it bottlenecks into ninety feet of a narrow passage under the bridge. So, creating a no-wake zone is actually standard procedure for the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. In order to increase safety measures, both structurally for bridges and environmentally and for boater safety as well. So as these, this boat traffic, and as we know and we've heard from everybody, development is booming here, that increases boaters on the water as well. So there's more boat traffic funneling into this tiny ninety-foot wide space. And I have seen firsthand boaters who are either inexperienced, are not aware of proper boating etiquette. Or perhaps just don't exactly know what they're doing, charge through that, that bottleneck area overtaking smaller vessels, causing a real safety concern. Not for our property necessarily, but for boater safety. In addition to that, there's a public access point on the opposite side of our property where the public can access. Our local waters for crabbing, fishing, and just natural enjoyment and recreating on our waterways. Public access to our waters is also slowly dwindling as far as public free spaces are concerned. But with these wakes, it does increase a safety hazard over there for the people that are recreating, and in addition to that. It increases erosion of the banks around the structure of the bridge, which I think is why they only did fifty yards on either side, cause they were mostly concerned about the bridge. Including the bridge um boundary wall that is underneath as well, that contains that ninety-foot um space underneath. Um, so in addition to our property being at risk of this no-wake zone, we also have the boater safety and of course, the um. Damage to the environment and down the way at Safe Harbor, but as we heard, that is a mute point for now, so I'm not going to mention that. Um, but what we often don't talk about as far as no-wake zones are concerned is property damage. Private, public, private and public as well. So if you see underneath Holden Beach Bridge, there's a long no-wake zone section, Wrightsville Beach as well. Carolina Beach and their harbor as well. We may be a private land, that a private company, but we're not any different. Aside from our size than Safe Harbor or um Morning Star Marina, which has a huge no-wake zone already, even though they're farther set back. From the actual waterway operating channel than we are. So, uh, I really encourage you to consider a yea for this so that we can at least move forward with the fifty-yard. Extension of the no-wake zone under this high-traffic area with a bottleneck that increases safety concerns for boaters. That also causes concern for damage to public property as the other side of the waterway and the infrastructure of the dock itself. Ours, our private docks, and also the bridge structure underneath as well. Um, I think that's all that I have for you, so, yeah.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Please do. Okay, you got two issues. I get it. I mean, my son's been a commercial, I mean, charter boat captain, and I've been out on the water a good bit and that kind of thing, but I do know exactly what you're saying. Come out of the, uh, no-wake, did they throttle up and go wide open? Okay, so what happens if we say yes? It's gonna exacerbate the issues in your area as well as the other ones who requested us extend it. However, if we say no, then we have exacerbated damage to the foundation as well as the foundation of the bridge and everything else. Too, I don't see how we went on either one of these things. So are you, are you advocating that we say yes, so you have a partial perspective? Even though you know you're gonna get people throttling up and having more potential damage to your property. But you are saying that you're gonna go back to the wildlife and say to them, we want to not only take what we have now, but we want to extend it.
Yeah, we've actually, my dad has already initiated the process to extend it, cause when he realized that the fifty-yard boundary was not inclu- it only includes one of our boat slips.
Yeah.
It doesn't include our deep slip where we haul boats in and out of the water where our barges sit. We actually also house the barge that is used for the Fourth of July fireworks. So it poses a major risk there as well. So we're already going through the process of trying to get that extension.
So the short term.
Correct.
Not trying to catch up, but short term is basically saying yes, because we'll build off of that.
Right, exactly. If we say no and strike that down, it creates more of a barrier to entry.
Uh, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you.
Small, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, wait, 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 come back. I just thought something. If we were to vote nay, will it harm? Will Wildlife look at it like, well, they don't even want the, the hundred yards? Would it hurt the chances of you getting it extended?
I can't speak to that. I'm not a part of the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. Uh, hearing you say that, I would assume yes. If we don't want a hundred yards, then why, why would they consider three hundred? Yeah.
But the only, the only thing that worries me, I know exactly what you're saying. I know that as soon as they get out of the no-wake, they're going wide open. So then you have a greater chance of damage, so. But we're betting, we're hedging a bet here by agreeing to do it, that you're gonna be able to come back to them and say, we actually need more.
Correct, yes, and and hoping that that fifty-yard boundary between now and these steps. It's possible that it could get expanded before it actually goes into into action, before it actually gets implemented and the buoys are set. And the signage is up. It's possible we can get that extension included.
Okay, I, thank you.
Plus, the boats are already speeding up and down there anyway. You already have the weights, so we need to stop them. Um, I mean, it's really dangerous when you're uh working on the side of the water, and that does narrow. I'm, that's my district, so.
Yeah. It is very close to our perimeter of our docks, and I mean, there's thirty feet between the end of our, end of our floating docks and the beginning of that bridge wall, so.
I understand, and so I'm making motion that we.
Gonna go out and public here.
Oh, he's got to come out and public here.
And I have one question for the board after we get out of.
I find it incredible. I've been a boatsman for nearly fifty years. And I don't know, I just thought it was, the whole world knew, when you're going under a bridge, no wake. I, it's hard to believe that we don't have a no wake zone underneath. It's just automatic. Common sense would tell you, don't, and, and when you're going by marinas.
Common sense is not that.
Yeah, yeah, apparently not.
Yeah, it is common practice for no wake zones to be under bridges. Anywhere where there's potential hazards to properties and or ecosystems or bottlenecking traffic, high traffic areas as well.
Crazy to me.
Used to be a drawbridge.
Well, that's true.
Yep.
Ms. Morgan, we thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We'll close the public meeting or the public hearing round, I'm sorry.
Just one question before Commissioner Sykes makes her motion. Would it be, I'm asking staff this, would it be appropriate to make the motion to approve this, but also attach a letter saying that we support the idea of it being extended beyond what's officially in this request that they could take back and use with their application?
That must be good enough.
I, I think wildlife is, is gonna, if, if they're requested to consider another area, they will do the survey and and a piece of this is that because it is the intercoastal waterway, uh, the Corps of Engineers has to approve it also, and I believe it was the Corps of Engineers that actually said that they wouldn't support the three hundred yards on, on either side. So I, I guess my opinion would be it's probably neutral as to whether a letter would help, but I, I don't think a letter would hurt if, if the board so wished.
I'd be in support, I'd be in support of that.
I'm being supportive.
Ms. Sykes put that in her motion.
Yeah.
I move that we adopt this um submission for this no wait zone and the intercoastal waterway and to include a letter of recommendation to go further.
I'll second.
I'll third.
This one's going to be quick and easy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No, those that passes. Thank you, everybody. Neil, go home.
Don't go home. Go see your family at the, wherever you're staying.
See your family. And we'll see you next week when you get back from vacation.
And thank you for going above and beyond.
Yeah, really.
Absolutely.
Can't thank you enough. Uh, you Neil, a second.
He could have zoomed in, couldn't he?
Yeah.
If he wasn't speaking.
Yeah. Thank you again, Neil.
Drive safely.
All right. Yeah. Mr. Stone, you will be presenting on this commercial property assessed capital expend- expenditures, CPACE as it's called. Uh, you want me to open a public hearing and?
Uh, I'll just make a s- a super brief statement and then you can open it. Uh, last month, the board uh signed a notice of intent to hold this public hearing for community feedback about the CPACE program. In a nutshell, CPACE is an economic development tool that potentially offers preferred loan terms from private lenders to certain commercial and industrial projects and certain aspects of those projects. Uh, there's a little administrative paperwork for the county, but there are no financial responsibilities of the county uh in it. Uh, and so one of the requirements to go forward with the program is for you to hold this public hearing. And then after the conclusion of the hearing, if you want to proceed, uh, there's a resolution attached to the item that, that you would need to approve.
Okay, thank you. So we will open the public hearing. On my sheet, nobody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to come up on this topic? And what I thought. Now we will close the public hearing. What is the wish of the board?
I make a motion that we pass this resolution for CPAC program.
Second.
Commissioner Sykes and Thompson? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on. Thank you, everyone. Uh, administrative report. Mr. Stone, A B C Board.
Thank, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The item you have in front of you here is uh that your Brunswick County A B C Board made a request as part of their budget proposal this year that you consider increasing their compensation. Their compensation is set by a North Carolina general statute uh at a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. However, you have the option to increase the compensation beyond that amount. What the A B C Board has requested because of increased sales volume and increased meetings is that you increase their fee, but to a flat monthly amount of three hundred dollars. Uh, I have a couple of concerns with that. One, your other volunteer boards, including some that work many, many hours uh each month, get a much lower meeting stipend than this. And secondarily, since this statute seems to refer to you having an ability to increase a per meeting stipend, but doesn't address an issue of a monthly stipend, I would therefore recommend that you simply leave it at the hundred and fifty dollars per meeting.
That's where you want to go. We'll start, Marty, we'll start with you. Let's go this way, Richard.
Well, quite frankly, and I'm being candid, I was aghast that they got a hundred and fifty dollars to begin with. In fact, I had one person say they want to increase it to four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Well, I know a lot of people who have served very tirelessly on boards for nothing or maybe fifty dollars at that, because they didn't do it from the financial aspect. They did it because they wanted to be of service to the community, and that was at least the whole fault behind it. So I didn't even know they got that, but it's, that is based by statute. It's law. Law requires that we compensate them a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. And that being said, I think that's a gracious plenty, especially when most people do this just in service to the community. I know a lot of volunteer firemen. I know people Habitat for Humanity, a lot of these different organizations, they do it out of kindness of their heart, and they want to be part of the process, and they want to give back to the community, and that's the whole nature. And that should be the ethos that's going on with respect to these boards, not a transactional perspective. And that being said, I'm in agreement with the county manager that we're remandated, we're required to pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month, and I believe that's more than adequate for that. And if people don't like that, I'm sorry, but that's just my take.
Go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Cook.
As do I.
Same.
Hey, the way bills are going in Raleigh, they're talking to the wrong people. I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, somebody make a motion then.
I make a motion that we retain the, the compensation as it currently is as mandated by state law, which is one hundred and fifty dollars.
Cook, we'll go with Cook and Sykes, because she said it quicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. That was a no brainer. Okay, Steve, again, fire service funding and the planning schedule.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last month, the board requested that we provide a planning schedule for looking at addressing the funding needs of the fire departments. Uh, we have a rough schedule here, uh, and I'm going to read some discrete dates, but I'll tell you, it's the, these are target dates, and will take long enough to be thorough enough on each aspect. Uh, and we will, and I will say up, upfront, I certainly heard what Chief Drew said this evening and have heard what others across the county have said, and a couple of things I'd like to say before I even read dates. The intent of this process is to find a way to provide truly adequate funding for the fire service in Brunswick County to make sure that every community has the fire protection services that they need. Uh, there is, there are several optional ways to do that, but it is not the intent of anyone in our office for any of those options to be a county fire service. That is not, it's not even on the maybe list. Uh, we fully intend to include the Fire Chiefs Association, the municipalities that have municipal departments, and the municipalities that support volunteer departments and the other municipalities in the conversation. Ultimately, the, the funding for unincorporated county lies with the county commissioners, and then the municipalities are technically able to do as, as they individually wish. We know that one of our larger municipalities has already adopted a, a fire tax and has moved away from, from the fee system. Uh, uh, we, we have, staff have actually been working on some aspects of this all the way back to the winter of twenty twenty-three. We had some staffing changes and some realignments uh that caused us to take a brief pause, but our, our plan is to do a lot of statistical analysis and review of the needs and the potential mechanisms and potential districts and to have some alternative plans that we can present uh by the end of next month, by the end of August. We would like to complete initial discussions with all the stakeholders by roughly the middle of October, get, get their feedback on that. And then within another month, by before Thanksgiving, we would really like to have some draft alternate plans and tax rate alternative plans for the Board of Commissioners. Uh, and I said, really, all through the process, uh, we will be soliciting input from all the stakeholders, and we would like to have a final recommendation for the Board of Commissioners by your goals retreat in January.
Is that sufficient time? I thought excuse, I was under the impression that we had to notify the municipalities by the beginning of the year.
Well, I, I think if, if they have been giving us input and we've been responding to them through the process, I think that they will have had time to, to work it into any budgetary adjustments they might need to make in, in their budget if, if we do it by, by the middle of January. I don't, I don't think that would be, be problematic. I wouldn't want to push much beyond that date, because I think that could become problematic for the county as far as implementation, and certainly could be problematic for the municipalities as, as well.
Okay. Well, this is informational only, but does anybody have any comments?
I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman and uh well, everybody. I know of no plans whatsoever to create a countywide fire department. None. As the manager said, it's not even part of the conversation. We, there's no plans for it. Nobody wants to do it. Thing about it is, we want to make sure that everybody's made whole. The mayor's all want it. The municipalities want it. The fire departments want it, the fire chiefs want it. We want everybody to be on the same page. How we run this thing go. That's how it's made so difficult, is try to figure it all out, how to make all these components fit together and make it into a workable solution. But there seems to be, this man right here with the beard can make, can do miracles with finances. We've seen him do it in the past, and we hope he can continue. But that being said, I believe that hopefully we'll have something that will work. And uh, but I will tell you that if somebody's not being represented, fire department's not being represented, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be making some noise. Or if the municipalities aren't being represented, I'm going to make them some noise. We got to make sure everybody's on this same table, on the same sheet of music as we go forward, because we're going together as one. And I believe everybody shares that perspective, because I know you guys, and I've talked to you a long time, and I've said this, the fire chiefs that I know sitting out there, I've said this to you guys over and over and over again. That's the whole idea, and I've said it to the municipalities as well. We do not want it to be a polarization. We do not want to be in us versus them. We're all working together as one team. That's the way we pull together, that's the way we make it happen. And I'll hush. Somebody else has got something better to say than that, I'm sure.
Pat? Right. Just a couple of things. First of all, I think that is a very ambitious timeline, and that's going to take a lot of time. I, but you just don't skip important steps to get to that timeline. We want it done quick by the timeline, but we also want to make sure we don't miss something important that could make a good idea turn into a bad idea, because this is a very big change in the way we do fire business in Brunswick County if we go down that path. I see a few different potential outcomes in terms of what a fire tax could look like. One would be same fire tax rate countywide. I don't know if that works for Brunswick County, because you look at the last revale and what it did to the people on the beaches was very different than what it did to people up in farmland. So the same tax rate could affect different people in parts of the county very different ways. The other end of the spectrum is each one of our current fire districts gets its own fire tax. I also am not sure that's the right answer, and I think the truth probably lies somewhere in the middle. I don't know what it looks like, but maybe four or five, I'm just picking that number out of thin air, regions with multiple departments in them that have a tax rate for that region. The biggest thing is devil's in the details, and I think the, the challenge that I hope we can avoid is, a few years ago, when a couple of folks on this board were on a committee to look at this issue, it seemed like everybody dug in to defend what they had rather than attack the problem. And it's going to take everybody being willing to probably come to a resolution that nobody's extremely happy with, but that we can all live with, because it works for the people of Brunswick County. And I, you know, I don't know a single person in the county who cares whose logo is on the side of the fire truck that shows up at their house if they call nine one one. They just want the fire out, and they respect everybody from every department. Um, and then Northwest Fire Department's here, they've been to my dad's house a bunch of times for different things, and I, you know, appreciate what they do, but if it happened to be Leland that day for some other reason, if there's a fire, they just want the fire out, and it's going to take a team effort and everybody taking a step back and putting the good of the county ahead of every, ahead of anybody's own individual agenda.
All right. Um, you know, first off, thank you for coming back to us with, with some, uh, with some dates, but let me, let me start off by saying this, that uh I can go along with the analysis uh in the tax rate of trying to figure out how we're going to do that by August twenty-ninth. I do think that there's going to have to be um considerable meetings to discuss the, your, your next paragraph um as it relates to possible consolidation, reconfiguration uh in district boundaries, because I think the longer you wait or the longer the county waits to discuss anything like that uh with, with the service providers uh that are providing the service to our county. Um, I, I think you're, you're, you're asking for a, a lot of, a lot of issues to surface uh and, and, and uninformed issues, misissues. So I think you're going to have to arrange your meetings to where you're not just working on one, one paragraph through August twenty-ninth. You're going to have to be working on all this at the same time. Uh, I, I like the fact that you're involved in the Fire Chiefs Association and municipalities, uh, because I, I do have a department in my district that the uh a current uh, or a an adjoining municipality, I believe, has already initiated a study to look at their, their fire service for the future that possibly could impact at least one of the service delivery volunteer departments in my district. Uh, I still, you know, my, my feelings is this, that we are still, even though we're moving forward and we're having the discussion and we're looking at it, we are still in a very dangerous situation with our staffing levels. You know, I You know, I, I heard that the other day that we had a, had a structured fire and nine departments were dispatched to it. And we had 12 certified firefighters that show up. I mean, I'm sure that there were additional firefighters that could not function as a certified firefighter. But could there, be there for support and I understand that. I think that we're putting our fire departments in a, in a big predicament to, to be able to send mutual aid. A, a great distance, if we're sending nine departments to, to a district, that's a long way for a number of our departments to travel. And, and why would I send all my coverage personnel to assist someone else? I mean, the good thing to do is yeah, do it and send, send personnel. But I've got to keep somebody, you know, we, we, we talked about the big fire at Boiling Spring Lakes. And, and it's very commendable what our departments were able to do there. But think about what was going on back at all those other stations while Boiling Spring Lakes was having that fire. So we need to make sure that we're providing personnel, certified personnel at the stations. That still needs to be one of our critical areas. I, I think that we're running a risk of, of waiting as long as we're waiting. But I understand how processes work with the county, so I'm okay with that. The only other thing I would say is, when we're sending, think about this, when we're sending, everybody knows, if you don't know, then you need to drive on some of the roads down on my end of the county. If you don't know how dangerous it is to run apparatus from nine different departments to one area of this county. And, and, and put that on, on the firefighters, uh, that, that's a lot, that's a whole lot. And to be quite honest with you, the county should share in, in the, in the blame for anything that occurs. There, if there is an accident. Uh, and you've already heard this evening about the number of traffic fatalities that we've had just on one road in the county. So anyway, uh, I'm glad we're moving forward. Uh, I do want to make sure that we are gonna be working on these not separately, but all at one time. So that we get the message out and we are working together to find the right pathway. And I'm, I'm open to, to discuss and I'm open to participate, so, thank you.
I, I also think these dates are pretty ambitious. I, I pray that this could be done. I, everybody else said I'm grateful that the mayors and the chiefs association and everybody's gonna be at the table. I've been personally working on this for a couple of months, I have a legal pad. Keep thinking I come up with an idea and then I think of the unintended consequences and I go, oh, that, so that idea didn't work so great. And I, if I showed you, I, I must be 12, 13 pages deep on this legal pad. I hope we could do this, as Commissioner Williamson said, I don't want to do this rushed. I mean, we're talking to have this done in less than three months. Man, that's ambitious, because this is a lot of money, a lot of moving parts. And no matter how we walk away from this, somebody's gonna be POed, nope.
That's true.
It, it might be nobody's happy. So, uh, I'd, I'd like to try to minimize that as best we can. But I could promise you, some people are gonna be very upset no matter how this shakes out. I, I hope we could do it. I, I commend you if you can, I just personally don't see it happening in less than three months. We were talking doing this in like 11, 12 weeks, I don't see it. Gonna be a whole lot of opinions, when you get all the mayors, all the chiefs, everybody else, our staff, us, everybody involved.
I have to say, I don't really agree, unfortunately, I don't agree that somebody's gonna be really ticked off. I think that we're gonna look and find what the best model is moving forward, because there's always some growing pains when we do something. But I think it's gonna be something that we're all gonna be able to come together from a collaborative perspective and say, this is what we can do and this is where we can move forward with it. And that's my hope. That's where I'm going into it is saying, I'm not gonna look and see, well, this group may or may not like it. Now, I'm saying everybody's gonna understand it and, you know, it's like everything else. It's like, gee whiz, we've been in this meeting for two and a half hours, you know? I'd really like to go home, you know, I'd like to get this thing expedited and move home, but that's not the reality. The reality is we have to work through it and that's the same way it is with this fire tax. We're gonna have to work through it, we're gonna have to figure out a way to be able to make it work.
I can promise you, if all of those groups are somehow happy, our citizens are not gonna be happy. As Ms., as Ms. Gates came up and pontificated for five and a half minutes, no matter what, she's not gonna be happy.
Well, at least I think we're gonna have a working model.
I hope we can do this, Pat, you have something?
Yeah, I appreciate all of y'all coming out tonight and, uh, Charles, you speaking for your, the association. My biggest concern is I don't want to put a Band-Aid on it. I would like to get it resolved, what's best for the county. It might not be best for each one of your departments. However, we need to do it right for the citizens, because if we're gonna give you money, you need to be accountable. Money, people's tax money shouldn't just be spent to be spent. But I'm willing to move forward with a tax if we get all the answers. There have been some questions that I have sent to our county manager and have asked for information from the fire departments. The sooner you get the information to us, the faster we can move forward with these issues. Because all these issues have to be looked at. So I, you, you know, I know you're not gonna all agree, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But the only way we can resolve it is everybody comes together and works with us to move it forward.
Could I ask that we move the screen, the agenda item up so that we can see, so that the audience can see the rest of the?
Good call.
There you go.
Yep, it's there for everybody. I just, I'm gonna add one last thing before we move on from this. But I, I agree with Commissioner Sykes, want to do this one time. I, I don't, I don't want to come back a year from now and I got chiefs at the podium screaming, I need money, I need money. I don't need, I don't want mayors coming, podium screaming, well, you didn't make us whole, we still gotta put money in. And it's inevitable. And I can promise you, I'm gonna have citizens standing at the podium saying, what do you mean, my taxes went up? For what? And they won't understand that you will no longer be paying a fire fee, but a fire tax instead. So the fire fee portion of your tax statements that you're all getting right around now. Uh, it's gonna take education, help people understand. You're not paying the fire fee anymore, it's got a different name now, it's a fire. So, does anybody have anything else to add before we move on? They got nothing? Okay, we're moving on, thank you staff, good luck. Mr. Lockamy, come on up.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So I'm here to request that authorize, the Board of Commissioners authorize the chairman and clerk to the board to execute a professional service agreement. Datus of North Carolina in the amount of 695,000 for engineering services and other related services. In association with the reclaimed water ordinance and master plan project. So we'll start with reclaimed water, what is it? It's highly treated effluent waste, effluent water from wastewater treatment plants. It can be used for non-drinking uses such as lawn irrigation and landscape irrigation, cooling systems and certain industrial uses. So why are we looking to revise our current policy? We would like to reduce the amount of potable water used for irrigation. And we would also like to find alternative methods for disposal of effluent from our wastewater treatment plants. Our current policy requires that the use of reclaimed water for golf courses only for irrigation. It does not extend into neighborhoods, businesses or other high use areas. So one major opportunity of this revision in the ordinance will give us the chance to investigate the use of reclaimed water for residential irrigation. As you know, most of our peak demand for water comes from the use of drinking water to irrigate lawns. By using reclaimed water for residential irrigation. We could reduce the peak of demand on a potable water system. And reduce the frequency of capital improvement projects, upgrades to the water treatment system. It'll also reduce the size and frequency of any future required upgrades. And it'll help reduce O and M costs by reducing the sizes of, of the treatment facilities and pumps. The other idea behind this ordinance, changing it, is to find additional avenues for the disposal of wastewater treatment effluent. It always seems that we're in either design or construction of a wastewater treatment plant these days. And one of the major components of the cost of those treatment plants is disposal of treated effluent. So currently, we dispose of effluent by discharge to service waters. High rate infiltration basins, spray irrigation and drip sites. The last three of those are very land intensive. Sorry, I lost my place, um, let, land intensive. So one way to reduce the cost of these treatment facilities is to reduce the amount of land. If we can use the treated reclaimed water for irrigation of residential reuse. Irrigation, then we will be able to reduce that amount of land that we would have to purchase. And as you know, land is expensive and finding suitable land for, uh, for disposal. Uh, is becoming hard to do as well as permitting, is hard to do. So, our plan is two phased, first we would rewrite the, we would look at rewriting the ordinance. It would help modernize, uh, our reclaimed water ordinance to reflect the current best practices. It would expand the use of reclaimed water irrigation from beyond just golf courses. And it would make it user friendly by setting clear standards and expectations. If the ordinance was approved after we presented, um, by the board, we would move on to phase two. That phase two would be a reclaimed water master plan. And that would be just like the water and sewer master plans we previously completed. It would determine and help us develop a long-term strategy for expansion. And then identifying infrastructure needs, identify priority areas and timelines for the expansion of the system. So, to help with this project, uh, the county issued a request for qualifications for these services. And a selection committee reviewed the statements of qualification and chose Arcadus of North Carolina as the most qualified firm for this project. And therefore, we're here recommending the Board of Commissioners authorize the chairman and clerk of the board to execute the professional services agreement. With Arcadus of North Carolina in the amount of 695,000 for the engineering services and other related services associated with the reclaimed water ordinance and master plan.
Everybody got all of that?
Some asked the question.
Seven hundred thousand dollars to hire an engineer to tell us what to do with effluent water. Go ahead.
I took a tour of the wastewater plants back when I came in commissioner. And the interesting thing that I discovered, or I was told, was that we take the water out of Cape Fear, or northeast Cape Fear, if you will. And then we put it back into the water, it's cleaner than we took it out. Okay, that's one thing. The second thing is, I was in a public hearing down at St. James. And there were engineers in the room and they were all talking about stuff that scared people to death about reclaimed water. And I said, just a minute, I'm not an engineer, but please explain to me, is this not cleaner than the water that's in your ditch? They said, oh yes, a lot cleaner than the water in the ditch. And I said, so in other words, if my dog happened to go out for a walk and, and drink water out of the ditch, this is actually cleaner than what my dog would be drinking out of the ditch or out of something else like that. I got lab, he goes everywhere, so, no telling what he drinks out of. But my point being is, this is not dangerous water, this is not gonna adversely affect individuals. This is water that has already been treated and it could, is suitable for that type of land application. And it actually potentially can bring down the cost, or the ongoing cost of our waste treatment.
Yes, sir, and our, uh, potable water.
Indeed, yeah. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
I got one. Thank you. Has the county attorney looked over this, uh, ordinance? I didn't think you had, because, uh, I'm assuming that any new pipeline that's run would be run by new, in new developments to, to aerate yards. I mean, you're not gonna go into existing neighborhoods and put these water lines in so that we can switch over. So it must be in new developments. Now, didn't we run into some legal complications whenever we did an ordinance and started charging? Cause I'm assuming where this 600,000 is gonna be charged to the new developers and not the citizens of Brunswick County as, as a whole. So that we don't get into that lawsuit.
It's my understanding, uh, the 600,000 is coming out of the regular utilities budget.
Okay, and who pays that? I'm sorry.
Everybody.
Okay, well, if we're gonna be looking at a project that puts lines in to run affluent through. For, for, uh, aeration, then we're gonna put it in new developments. In my understanding, or the way I look at it, if we're gonna do that, then the new, the developers need to pay for it. Not, not, I, I mean, we don't even need to be paying for it.
Well, we haven't reviewed an ordinance because there isn't one, but we did build, we did make sure there was adequate time as part of this process for us to review whatever the ordinance will be.
But didn't we get in trouble for that before, for, for charging for a service that we didn't have the legislation to do?
That was for alleged impact fees.
Okay, well.
This, we're not charging the 600,000 to the developers.
So we're just gonna, we're just gonna let everybody pay for it?
I can ask a clarifying question just to make sure. Um, the 695,000 dollars is us hiring a firm to write the ordinance and master plan to decide how we move forward with this, if we move forward with it in future developments, correct? So this is not for a project, this is to develop a plan for what it will look like in the future, is that correct?
It'll develop the ordinance and then it, it, we will present it to you, so it will come back. Do several presentations, there'll be workshops, they'll have stakeholder input workshops with those stakeholders. And then we'll come back and give you a presentation, suggested ordinance, of course, that'll go through legal. And then y'all will vote on it and if you pass the ordinance, then we would do a wastewater, I, sorry, reclaimed water master plan. And that would lay down the guidelines for what would have to happen to, uh, actually implement. And if the reclaimed water used safe for irrigation.
So the minute that we get and spend 695,000 dollars and we determine that, well, we need state legislation to be able to do this ordinance. We've lost 695,000 dollars. So tell me how that works.
Or you have, you don't spend the 695,000 and you wait around till legislation someday, sooner or later decides to address this.
How about we send somebody to?
And then we gotta do it.
How about we, we table this and get legal to ask the state of North Carolina if it's illegal for us to do this?
And, and, and Commissioner Thompson's right, it's, it's mainly for new development and it would, I mean, it's not for the county as a whole. Because how many people are gonna sign up for the reused water? It's gonna be developments, residential. We, I haven't seen that many businesses coming in that we can reuse water for.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, that's why we need to adjust our ordinance. We have an ordinance now, and so that would be the first step is to look at how we can, um, utilize reused water in new developments. We've looked at. We've looked at years ago, putting reused water in existing developments. It is not cost-effective. But for new developments, it would be cost-effective. And as far as how that could be funded, one of the things that the consultant would look at would be exactly where the monies would come from. So, one idea, right now, we fund a lot of the transmission systems for reused water from our wastewater fund. However, since you would expect a reduction in potable water for somebody that was using reused water, we could look at adjusting our capital recovery fees for potable water, since during peak times, there would be a reduction of that. And so, the consultant would come back and look at that, and we would see what adjustments we would want to make to the existing reuse ordinance before we would move on with the second phase, which is the actual master planning study.
Are there other ordinances similar to what you think we would have here in the state of North Carolina that have been deemed legal? Yes, sir.
Yes, in fact, the town of Cary has one that we would be looking at possibly as a model.
And while I do have some heartburn over that price tag, and I would, you know, we'll come back to that. I do support the concept, and you know, I live in H2Go service area. And when they put in RO, I heard a lot of people saying, "I'm paying RO rates for my irrigation water." And they would, you know, if this had been in place when my neighborhood was built in the H2Go area, I would much rather use reclaimed water than higher-dollar RO water for my irrigation, that if we don't run our irrigation, we'll get a letter from the HOA because the grass is brown. So, that to me is the benefit of this, but I mean, going back to that price tag, is that an inline price for this kind of service? Because I?
Yes, and a lot of the cost is for the master plan. And so, the master planning, all types of engineering have gone up, and we believe it's in line with what we would get another firm to, you know, to price.
And we would also, we wouldn't spend the money for the master plan unless y'all approve the ordinance. So, it may not be the full amount if y'all choose not to.
So, how many of these new developments that have already been approved, do you think you're gonna be able to pick up with reused water? Because if they've already been approved and they're gonna start, that's a lot of developments already approved. How many more is the county gonna get? Because that's a lot of approved plans that hasn't even started. We got a hundred and some on the books that's been approved that hadn't even started.
Right, I think that would depend on what level in the approval process you're talking about. But when it comes to submitting plans to the engineering department, any of the subdivisions that have been approved at a planning level, I think would likely be subject to the new ordinance that we would have when they submitted to engineering and actually had plans.
We've got, what, forty-three, over forty-three thousand units approved now?
Right.
And another thirty-eight hundred that are proposed. What's your sewer capacity today? Are you in the eighties?
Percentage-wise, we ended up the fiscal year twenty-five at eighty-two percent at our West Brunswick facility.
Eighty-two percent of our capacity you're already at.
At our West Brunswick facility, and at our Northeast facility, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I think it was forty to fifty percent is what that range.
And this would help, long-term, take some pressure off of that, was that my understanding from what you were saying earlier?
That is correct.
It also prevents you from having, as we stated, don't have to buy land to view as a spray field, because that's another issue that we run into. Because I think if I'm not mistaken, Ocean Isles issue was not so much the treatment aspect, but they didn't have the spray capacity. And so, we had to ship stuff up to the two-eleven plant to handle that.
But that is correct. Effluent disposal is a challenge today.
Yeah, so, in essence, it's a long-term type cost-reduction perspective. You're spending this money now for the long-term to bring down the overall overhead.
Yeah, and the cost for potable water is tremendous. So, if you can lower the peaks in the summertime, then that just reduces the amount of expansions that we'll have in the future for potable water.
Yeah, a lot of it's irrigation, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Well, I would be in favor of voting for this today. Obviously, it sounds like at least one or two commissioners have questions. Is there any major headache if we table this until our next meeting to give them a chance to ask their questions? Other than, the sooner we get it, if we get it passed, the more we can get people hooked up to it.
Well, until we get the ordinance.
Just because it was a topic, the study and report phase and ordinance development of the contract is three hundred ninety-five thousand. And then after that, which sort of like a Phase Two, the reclaimed water master plan, that's the other three hundred thousand. And that gave the total of the six hundred ninety-five thousand of the contract.
It seems to me, I might be wrong, but it sure feels like every single meeting, we are approving another engineering study. And they're not cheap.
We all are.
This one's cheap.
We're in the wrong business.
Yeah, this one's cheap at six ninety-five.
Yeah.
I thought lawyers said it, right?
Multi-million dollar consulting and engineering, and yet I look around and nothing is completed. It's incredibly frustrating to me.
Kinda makes me wish I'd stayed an engineer and stuck.
I hear that.
I do have, while we're on water, I do have one other question on the wastewater. How much money, because I recall us approving the plan to send the water line, affluent line into a bridge. That was like four, three or four years ago.
I remember that.
It's never done. So, how much money did we spend on that and didn't do it?
Well.
I mean, because short of the world, we had to hire an engineer to come up with that.
Right, exactly. And we would very much like to move that project forward, and we're doing that now. But we were unable to get easements in order to.
Did somebody, the county attorney's over there, he doesn't have a problem with other easements that we hear about.
I can't answer that.
Nothing's difficult. What I tell you earlier, you find a way to work around it, you do it.
Well, what? I'm kinda over these engineering high-dollar deals and nothing gets done. But what, what is the preference?
I don't have a problem with tabling it for the next meeting, so everybody gets all their answers to everything they want. But I do see in concept what they're talking about, there's value in this. Because I've already been down the road years earlier, and this was when we were proposing to take it to St. James, because they had the greatest amount of it. And then we had an individual who literally wrote the book on it out of New Jersey. We didn't know who he was, and then we found out, I don't know if you remember the guy or not, but I do. But anyway, he had served as the consultant for all the water and sewer in New Jersey. And so, within St. James, and he said, "It won't work." And I said, "Why won't it work?" And I thought he didn't know what he's doing. And then I found out who he was. He said, "You won't get your return on investment. It won't work because you can't go down existing developments to do it. You're gonna have to do new lines in new developments is the only way you're gonna make the return on investment." And he was right, and we stopped it. But we still had this ongoing issue of what are we gonna do with the spray field aspect? How are we gonna do that? Because that's a limitation that we have. And the other side of it is the cost. And the other, the third thing really is trying to get the permits to be able to take it and put it into some conventional perspectives, which seem to be closing in front of our doors. So, the thing is, this seems to be a viable approach. But it may cost us much money to get a consultant to be able to develop the ordinance, to be able to have a plan, to be able to move forward. If I'm understanding this correctly.
Should we?
Oh, sorry. So, if we approve this, how long is it gonna take them to come up with this ordinance and master plan?
Three hundred and eighteen days according to their contract. And then an additional two hundred and eighty-two days for the master plan. The entire contract term is about six hundred days.
Good gracious.
That's way too many days.
Two years? Nah, nah. This is, cut that down. This is where I get incredibly frustrated. You're gonna take nearly three-quarters of a million dollars, Tommy, but I will give you something in two years. When does this stop? I'm like up to here with engineering funds. They, and then they have the gall and the audacity. Halfway through, they're not even partially, or the date comes where they're supposed to have it in our hands, and they say, "Oh, well, it overruns and this and that. We need more money before we can give you an answer." If I'm gonna do anything.
Or they go under.
Right. If I'm gonna do anything, I want a contract that is so ironclad. Do not come back to me and say, "I need a postage stamp to mail this to you." It is what it is, period.
Well, it looks like to me you could subcontract the engineer that would do it on the job. You don't, we can't subcontract the engineer to come in and rewrite the ordinance? Instead of hiring an engineer firm that's gonna cost us six hundred ninety-five thousand?
Well, it's two jobs in one.
I know.
You know, we advertised it, and, you know.
But you have to advertise it. If it's, if it's an in-house, let's say you hire somebody temporary to do it for you. A temporary hire to rewrite the ordinance.
Yeah, we would be required to advertise the request. And so, just to comment on the length of time and schedule, I would very much like to get it done sooner, but there is a lot of time for public hearings and public engagement.
That's, this is just the engineer. We haven't gotten to the public hearings yet, where we approve it. This is just their timeline of when they're gonna give it to us.
Is it, is this the first time county attorneys read the document?
Yes, sir.
You've seen it already?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we table it until the next meeting and give them time to work on these dates. And on the ordinance to confirm that we can justify, and because of our history with ordinances and utilities, I want to make sure that this is a viable way to proceed forward with these new developers with this water line. So, I'll make a motion to table until the next meeting.
I will second the motion, just as, you know, just to allow commissioners to have their time. I support this concept, you know, we, and I heard it, you know, people saying they wish they had it in Leland, but I also want people to feel comfortable with voting for it. Two things I would ask, one is that if we get to a master plan down the road, that it include a public education component on how to educate people that reclaimed water is not sewage water being dumped in their lawns, that it is, tell people what it is. And secondly, I know that there's been times in the past where we table things to give people time to look at them, and then two weeks later, their questions were still unanswered because they hadn't asked them. So, I would ask everybody to make sure if you have questions, you get them to staff and give staff a chance to answer them.
I'd like to clarify, I'm okay with this, again, okay? Six hundred ninety-five thousand, I now realize is two different things. So, it's like three hundred for one, four hundred for the other, it gets us the ordinance and a master plan, okay? I need something solid, concrete, written in blood that says it's six hundred ninety-five dollars. It's not gonna take two years to do this, because that's BS. What are they doing? What do they work, two hours a month? I'm, come on, two years? That's ridiculous to me. I, how do they stay in business? What am I doing wrong in life?
Mr. Chairman, to your earlier question, I will let you know that the timeline did include three public hearings in front of the Board of Commissioners as part of the adoption process. So, at least as far as once they've done their work, there's gonna be a community meeting with stakeholders, three public hearings in front of the Board of Commissioners. Up to.
Why do I need three public hearings? We just knocked out two of them in fifteen, twenty minutes.
Because invariably, after one public hearing, and there's lots of questions, then some people come up, and they've been conservative with that part of the schedule at least, which I appreciated, because at the end, most contracts say one public hearing in front of the commissioners, and then people come to public comment and say some things, and the commissioners say, "You know what? These are valid points, let's get these addressed and come back for another public hearing."
I think everybody that works here can understand why we're a little, have a little heartache over people meeting deadlines.
Yeah, I'm a little.
In light of other related areas.
Quite edgy about nobody can make a deadline.
One more question, I'm sorry. Have you discussed with developers that they would agree to hook on to this after we do all this work, spend all this money? Because let's say you, we do all this, and then a new development comes in, and you're gonna put this reclaimed water in there. Then the citizens that they're selling to says, "Well, we're not buying." So, have you got an agreement that some of the developers would take this on, or?
The.
Needs to be required.
No, we don't have an agreement, and we wouldn't have one. That's what the ordinance would do. However, we understand fully what your concern would be. One, cost to developers and potentially cost to the homeowners. And so, what I was mentioning before about getting some type of credit potentially for potable water capital recovery fees would be the solution to that. But ultimately, that's what we're asking our consultant to recommend to us and come back to you with. And also, the public education portion of it would have some discussion back and forth with the communities that we, that would be affected by.
Well, it really wouldn't be feasible to be an option, because the thing is, you're gonna run a transmission line for that, and then, "Oh, no, I don't wanna do it." So, you have to go another two miles to get the next one that, "Oh, I'm not sure I wanna do it." No, it's part of the ordinance. You're gonna put irrigation there, you're gonna have reclaimed water.
Yeah, I think that's to Commissioner Sykes' question, you know, we want to make sure it's not Field of Dreams that we build it and hope they'll come. We want to make sure that if we go through this, that it's going to be used.
Right, we already have a backbone of the system in place, because we have to send reused water already to St. James and other areas, golf courses. So, we've got a backbone. What we're looking at doing is establishing some type of distance from that backbone for any new development and gradually grow that.
Yeah, we have a motion to table from Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor?
Is it, is it till the next meeting?
Yeah, till the next meeting.
So, these questions can be answered.
Yeah, indeed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
All right, number four was moved till later. Board appointments. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. So, first on the list, we have your, the requested appointment to the Tourism Development Authority of Mr. J. McRoberts came from the Tourism Development Group as a request to have him appointed Chamber of Commerce.
Change the chamber appointment to the TDA, I'll move approval.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Madam Clerk, again.
Yes, sir, and the second one is for the voting delegate and the alternate for your NCACC conference in August.
Who's going? I know I'm going, and Frank's going. Buddy's going.
I'm going. I think Randy's going.
We're all going?
We're all going.
I'm going, I would rather not be the delegate, just in light of my dad's health situation, just in case.
I can't be either one, I can't either. That's my mother.
You and Randy stuff.
No, you go. Yeah, no, I think it's only fair.
Who was it? Who was last year?
I was.
Yeah.
I thought I was it.
I thought you were two years ago, he was last year.
So, you all do it this time.
I've done it like three times, but I don't care.
Okay, I'll be delegate.
Yeah, I made, moved that Pat be the delegate and Mike be the alternate. Second.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gee, dang.
Yeah. I know what that means.
Yeah, I do too. We've all done.
I don't get to come home this early.
You don't stay for the President's Ball? On the Saturday night? Cause the voting's done Saturday morning.
I know, but that don't mean nothing. I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Moving on, other business and informal discussion.
Just one quick comment. I know we've got an item, I think, coming up at the next meeting about the Fisheries Coalition and, you know, I know very little about that group except what was stated tonight. I just wanna make sure we know what we're getting into. There's a longstanding battle between commercial fishermen and recreational fishermen. And also there's been a dispute between two of our own legislators on this issue. And I wanna make sure we don't become, probably step ourselves into the crossfire of something we don't fully understand. So I'd love to know more about that group, who's behind it, who funds it. I know it's fairly new. Are they supportive of commercial to the exclusion of, exclusion of recreational or do they support both? And I say that as a very poor recreation fisherman who eats pit things caught by commercial fishermen cause I don't ever catch anything. But I just wanna make sure we're not becoming a political football on an issue that's, that we haven't really researched.
I, I have looked into it in some detail. I have talked to Dare County Manager and Attorney Bobby Outland, who I've known for, golly, a better part of twenty years. And we talked in depth about it on the board of the North County Association of Beach and Waterway. So that point being said, it seems to be a very viable entity. And I've also put forth my, my desire to reserve, to serve as the representative for the county in regards to that, so.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
I can tell you, I used to go to all those meetings in Dare County, believe it or not, when I first got county commissioner. It can get rough. So if Marty wants to step in there, that's fine with me.
I'll give you money for tolls.
Maybe we can go ahead and put Commissioner Cook on the next agenda as our delegate.
I guess I'll be heading to Carteret County the next day.
There you go.
Now, I've got one issue if I can. You know, in, in light of the, a couple of different things, you know, our, we've, as I mentioned earlier this evening, the, the fact that we had a structural fire with nine departments having to respond and getting a small number of firefighters on the scene was one thing. Then with our water capacity, I'm assuming everybody's been looking at the water consumption being for some time now, and I realize that it is the peak season, but for some time now, it's been averaging over eighty percent of our water supply as we've been at capacity. We've, we've just heard this evening that eighty-two percent of our sewer capacity in, in one end of the county is already at eighty-two percent. Just, just recently, BMC, our utility provider, just came out with, with, with some information about increasing rates based, based on the, your, your increased usage. With this, going along with the public safety issue of our firefighters, I'm asking, oh, I didn't, there's another piece of information I didn't provide yet. We have, our board, our planning board has already approved a little over forty-three thousand units right now with a proposal to, to look at another, over thirty-eight hundred additional projects. And no telling how many will come in tomorrow. I'm, I'm asking not for a moratorium, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a suspension until we address the public safety needs of the, of our county. A suspension in any more review of any type of development within the county until we address all these concerns, until we get our water consumption through the summer months back into a, a regular, till we can address the eighty-two percent of capacity. Keeping in mind that out of these forty-three thousand that haven't even hooked up, while they're taking and, and utilizing our system, we're gonna be running into some issues possibly. And so I'm asking for just a suspension until we're able to address the public, till staff comes back to us and addresses the public safety concerns. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Well, I'll second it.
For clarification purposes, when you say all development, is that including commercial as well?
No, I, I would, I, I'll tell you what, I will just make my motion to be residential development and not include commercial. I, I think commercial is something that a lot of our area, because whenever you start talking about commercial, you're talking about dentist office, doctor's offices, pharmacies. And to be quite honest with you, we're in a critical need in those areas as well. We're, we're just, we've got growing pains and we, we, we best do something about it before someone else comes in and does something for us. I, I think, I think it's only wise for us to look at that. And so that, so it would be if Commissioner Sykes is okay with seconding the, not, not to include commercial.
Yes, I do.
And I'm not talking about the, the, I'm talking about development. And I'll even go as far as to say development over a dozen homesites. Because I want the independent builders here in the county to still be able to, to build on a lot that an owner may buy. I think that's fine. But I think any development that goes in that's over twelve homes needs to, we need to just suspend that currently until we get a handle on these public safety concerns. So that's my motion. If Commissioner Sykes goes along with the twelve residents.
Yeah, that's fine.
Once again, we have a motion and a second. Again, on the new business, which I'm gonna put an end to very shortly. Is there any discussion?
I do. Statutorily, when you get to eighty percent, you have to have a plan in place to be able to increase your infrastructure regarding water and sewer. We have a plan in place. In fact, I think the low point was thirty-eight, thirty-seven percent as far as water usage, cause I looked at the figures since January one. And now we have the height of the season where we have most people down here and we're still only about eighty-two percent. And sometimes it's less than that. And even if we have some greater restrictions of water usage, it would drop below that. We currently already have underdeveloped, when you get to ninety percent statutorily, you have to be under construction for enhancement. We are under construction for enhancement. And once we turn the water system on, we will have the second largest water utility in the nation, which is quite staggering to think of it. Because for a population that we have, a hundred and seventy thousand people, we're able to produce currently thirty million gallons of water a day. And we'll be able to produce forty-two million gallons of water per day in about six months. So we're not really in a shortage. And as you heard also, that one of the wastewater plants, the one that is probably the most expensive, which is up in Leland, where it's fastest growing county, kind of fastest growing town in the state, they're only at forty-two percent capacity with respect to their sewer. So I, I can't see that that would be a valid perspective. Not only that, there's other things I've talked to fire chiefs, multiple fire chiefs in fact, and they said, fine, you can give us all the money you want to. Give us all the money you want to. They didn't say it this way, but they basically said this. If you give us X number of dollars, where are we gonna find the firefighters? Because we hire, we put them out there and they're getting hired by our neighboring counties. Ori County and Uhander County, you've got deeper pockets than we do. And no matter how much you pay, they continue to go up higher. So where are we gonna get the people from? It's not a case of money. It's a case of where we're gonna find the people from. And we're trying to do that because BCC right now has a lot of programs going on. They just got a brand new driving simulator that came in, which is a really great thing. So there's a lot of efforts to be able to make this thing moving forward. So that being said, I can't support that motion.
Nor can I, for the exact same reason. When and if we turn the switch up in Leland, as Marty said, we'll have more than enough. I think some of your points are kinda invalid. The only thing, when John and Mr. Lockamy were up there, the only thing you heard is that they were at eighty-two percent sewer at, at the south end. You, you didn't hear the forty to forty-five percent up north. Same thing, requesting this every single day water count. And you ask for it in mid-June, in mid-June, when we are in peak tourist season. This is not unusual. And the fact that we put in water conservation on Fourth of July? I live here twenty years, we've done that for twenty years. Our population triples and quadruples. And so we, every year we do this. We put out a water conservation. We have more than enough capacity for our hundred and seventy-five thousand citizens. But when I got four hundred thousand citizens in the county, that's a strain. So it's a voluntary conservation. Nobody said it was mandatory. It's, it's just the way it's always been. You can't triple your population and expect to still have everything as it is. I, there is no way that I can support this.
I'mma go ahead and speak again. I don't know if you're aware, the houses that we mentioned that was gonna be built in the county, what was that number, Randy?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand or something. It does not include the nineteen municipalities that have building going on. Leland has sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty that's gonna be built between Green Hill and Green Swamp area. And that's massive. Now, how much capacity do we own at the sewer plant? Is most of it owned by Leland or the county? Okay. So we have no capacity at that end. Is that correct? How much would we have then? To me, it's not enough to provide us, I know we're using their capacity, I was, I would think some of it. Are we? Okay. But you, just add the sixteen thousand to the forty-three thousand. These are a lot of houses and I'm, I'm telling you, we're gonna, we're gonna get in trouble quick. Now, the water plant, yes, the water plant's gonna be big, but then we've got issues right now. We, we don't even have the RO finished. I mean, here we are still fussing about all the water. I just think that we need to put, suspend it and get some of this stuff resolved. Right?
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
As long as we seem to govern for the last ten months under other business and informal discussion, if people pull out white sheets at the end of every meeting and start making motions left and right here when others have no idea what's coming. I have no time to think about it, to research it. It's just boom, I get hit with these surprises, meeting after meeting after meeting. This has been going on since last September. You've been calling for a moratorium since last September. I guess you're not understanding. Okay, we will get sued, we will lose and lose big. Okay? So I'm gonna make a motion that in the future, no motions can be made under, at the end of the meeting, under other business or informal discussion. And that anybody that wants to put anything on an agenda, it will require two people. And I'll tell you how we do it. Cause I did this when I was the city commissioner, cause they were pulling the same nonsense. Okay? You wanna put something on the agenda, you wanna put ABC on an agenda? You send an email to the manager. He then forwards it to the remainder of the board. If one other person says, yes, I'd like to see that on the agenda, then it goes on the agenda. This way you got two people, we're not wasting time listening to somebody pontificate and at, at least somebody wants to discuss it. If it's just one person, I, I don't wanna waste time with it. Listen to somebody drool on for fifteen, twenty minutes. So my motion is, takes two people to put something on the agenda for every single meeting and no motions can be made under other business or informal discussion at the end of a meeting.
May I ask a question of the attorney really quickly?
Yeah, is that legal?
I believe this is covered in our rules of procedure that were adopted by a past board. Would we need to amend those in order to make these changes?
Yes, I was gonna wait for him to finish and say that what we would do is come back to you with amended rules as an agenda item for the board to consider at that time.
Chairman, also with respect to what you just stated, I'd like to also see that three commissioners, prior to publication, while it is still in a draft form, that three commissioners, after seeing that same email that you just stated, where one of them could weigh in on it, three could weigh back in and say, no, we do not want it on the agenda and it will not be published on the agenda.
Y'all, I have a major problem with you taking the freedom away when people have elected us to, to this office. When you're telling, directing us or enforcing us that we can't bring up something at a meeting. That is really.
You could bring it up, you can bring it up.
You can make a motion on it.
Motion.
Yeah, but that's still not fair. I mean, that does.
Oh, this is fair. This is fair, it's been going on for ten months.
It doesn't make any difference, it's bringing stuff out for us to discuss.
It's discussed.
We are.
So make motions.
Well, it still doesn't matter about the motion, whether or not you go against it, you should feel fine.
I do feel fine.
Evidently, you're not, if you're gonna make another regulation.
Every single meeting.
You're taking away my freedom. That's why I fought against is any government overruling stuff that I can't speak and, and make a motion at a meeting. I disagree with the second that we have because it's taking my freedom away. I should be able to make a motion without a second. So I think you're all wrong and you're taking freedom away. But that's, you do what, exactly what you want because you got three votes.
Well, the attorney's gonna look into it, is he not?
That would be, I would wanna know, anything we consider that the attorney has vetted it. In terms of how in most boards, Robert's rules would work, if you adopt an agenda to add a motion to that agenda, you have to amend the previously adopted agenda. I would like to see us move to where, if anything were gonna be considered here, we would have to have a motion to amend the agenda that was already adopted. Otherwise, it's informal discussion. And if someone, you know, I'm assuming Commissioner Thompson knew he wanted to bring this up at the end of the meeting, before the meeting started tonight. He could have made a motion then to amend the agenda and then we would have known if it was gonna go on the agenda. There's still a mechanism to do it. That's what, the way it's done in groups that follow Robert's rules. But that's kinda how I would envision something proceeding.
Nobody's saying you can't discuss anything under other business and informal discussion. I just don't wanna be surprised. And it's been going on for ten months, every single meeting. White sheets get pulled out and we start reading right down the list of demands, putting all kinds of demands on staff. I'm over it. It's ridiculous.
So would you like for me to go back and pull when Frank Wiggins has made motions at the end of things that he wanted done that we voted on too? Because I'll be glad to go back in the, in the meetings because he's done, he's had his stuff at the end too.
Nobody's talking about pulling it, they're talking about moving forward.
Yeah. I'm, I'm talking moving forward. It's been going on for ten months.
Well, you're still.
Two meetings a month.
You're still taking freedom away and I think it's wrong. You should be able to make a motion anytime you'd like.
I think my freedom's been taken away for the last ten months when I get surprised at the end of everything.
That's where you ran for office. You were, you ran for office to represent the people of Brunswick County. You ought to sit there and listen to it.
Not to be surprised at the end of the meeting.
You ought to sit there and listen to something.
Have I gone anywhere?
This is a justifiable issue for the citizens of Brunswick County.
And you can get as mad as you want.
You ought to look into it and do some research yourself. You know, this is an issue and it needs to be addressed.
I think it's more of an agenda, honestly.
We have another item on the agenda, speaking of agendas, that we need to get to.
We got two more.
So, Mr. Attorney, could you look into this in some way to amend our meeting? And how we can do this in a better way? And find a way that motions don't get made when the meeting is over. When it's over, a pre-printed white sheet that you could have put on the agenda at the beginning when we approved the agenda.
Well, the meeting's not over till you adjourn the meeting.
But this is an informal...
And be careful with violating my rights.
Nobody's violating anyone's rights.
It sounds like you're doing it in the citizens of Brunswick County.
Yeah, and it can sound like it.
It sounds like it.
It says informal discussion.
All it was was a motion after discussion.
No, that's the, no, the informal discussion is an informal discussion, not a motion, not a policy change.
Well, I'm not gonna guarantee whether we had rules or no rules. If I wanna make a motion, I don't care if I get a second or not. I will make a motion and y'all can just vote against it or just not even vote.
Well, I think that happened tonight.
Well, that's up to y'all.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Going to closed session. What do you got?
A motion in our closed session pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A one, three and five, to approve closed session minutes. Consult with the attorney to order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss the acquisition of property.
There's a mouthful. Need a motion?
I'll move to go into closed session for the reasons stated. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If I may, uh, request a ten-minute bathroom break.
Sure, I guess we could all use that after three and a half hours.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be...
Nine-thirty in the back.
Testing one, two.
One emergency, sir.
Yeah, my wife called twice.
He wants to know if I'm okay.
Are you dead?
Four and a half hours later.
Well, she's counting insurance money, my wife.
It's five and a half.
We're good to go.
Yes, sir.
All right. Bring this back. Well, that, whatever. Okay. I am at this point so confused as to what it is we're about to do.
Just ask the attorney.
So I am going to ask the attorney, Brian. Brian, take over this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We would like authorization to acquire easements over parcel 0240000108, parcel 2430007, parcel 238HG01502, up to and including condemnation.
Good. Did you get all of that?
Yep, sure did. Make a motion. We approve it.
Thank you, sir. And now...
Second. Oh, wait, wait, wait. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
Ready. And now we are to agenda item eight four, which was moved to after closed session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move your turn.
Second.
Did you want the presentation?
Number four, yeah, we need CDM.
We just voted on that.
Yeah, well, he's not... Okay, where is he?
Randy made a motion to approve that.
Well, I get it, but I... Did he want to come up and say anything?
I was going to present, if you like.
You want to hear this, or you...
I'm ready to go home.
Four and a half hours in this.
Motion... We adjourn.
I got a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's call.